Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here today. If I could have your attention for a few seconds for the instructions. I would ask that at this moment you please silence all electronic devices. If you need to carry a conversation within the boardroom, please do so outside of the venue, towards the back. We would greatly appreciate it in order to not disrupt the meeting. In case of an emergency, you'll see the exits towards the same entrance that you came, towards the parking lot. Please direct yourself to the directions of the uniformed personnel, and we will escort you out of the building as safely as possible. Thank you very much.
Good morning, and welcome all to the Los Angeles Port of Harbor Commissioners' public meeting today, Thursday, March 21st, 2019. We are now in open session. Our first order of business is Roll Call A. President Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Middleton.
Present.
Commissioner Moreno-Linarez.
Here.
Commissioner Peruzzi.
Here.
Commissioner Renwick.
Here.
President Lee, we have secured our quorum. Item A. Item B is the public hearing. Pursuant to the California Coastal Act of 1976 as amended, and the Port of Los Angeles' Certified Portmaster Plan Notice is hereby given, all interested persons and organizations at the Los Angeles Port of Harbor Commissioners, the Board, will hold a public hearing to receive evidence and advocate to the public appeal, the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit Number 1825, landslide infrastructure to operate battery-electric-powered equipment. In accordance with the guidelines of the Portmaster Plan, the Los Angeles Port of Harbor Commissioners will hold its public hearing today, March 21st, and estimated to include approximately at 11:30 pending the duration of the public comments, at the cruise terminal here at 250 Harbor Boulevard. To hear, receive evidence, and appeal of the above entitled coastal development permit, CDP. The appeal was lodged on February 21st, 2019, at the Board of Harbor Commissioners' regularly scheduled meeting as a CDP was being reported to the Board. The appeal issue, the issue for this hearing, and the question for the Board's consideration is whether or not the CDP was issued consistent with the Certified Master Plan and the California Coastal Act Master Plan 6.7.3. That concludes category, that concludes the item here. Next, President Lee.
Thank you, Amber. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here today. I'd like to begin by reading the hearing rules which have been posted. I hope everyone has had access to them. These are Rules 1 through 7. Commissioners may ask questions throughout. However, I'll request that you wait until the end of each speaker's allotted time in order to do so. Speakers are encouraged to coordinate testimony. All those who want to testify must fill out a speaker slip before the start of the hearing. Elected officials and public agency representatives get a maximum of two minutes each. Individual members of the public get a maximum of two minutes each. No seating of time will be allowed. No audible outbursts will be allowed. You may wave your hands to show your support, or give thumbs down to signal your opposition. To preserve adequate time for commission deliberation, the Chair reserves the right to close the public hearing after a reasonable opportunity to present all questions and points of view has been allowed. I very much appreciate everyone's cooperation in making sure this is an orderly and productive And now, I would like to call that the public hearing is now open. We have received, as the Board of Harbor Commissioners, a letter from the Mayor of Los Angeles, Mayor Eric Garcetti, dated March 20th, 2019, which I will read now for the record. Dear Board of Harbor Commissioners, The Port of Los Angeles is an economic engine that creates middle-class jobs and sustains Main Street businesses. The Port brings Los Angeles to the world, and the world to Los Angeles. We owe a debt of gratitude to the hard-working men and women of the International Longshore and Warehouse Union, and companies like APM Terminals, who have made ours the busiest port in the Western Hemisphere. The ILWU emerged following the 1934 West Coast Waterfront Strike. Longshoremen gave their lives to support the principle that workers should have a say in what work they did and how they were paid. We owe it to those who came before to keep balancing the scales of justice and protecting workers' rights. When we stand by labor, our port is stronger. Our communities are more prosperous, and our city is more equitable. APM Terminals has been a valued tenant since 2002, and operates Pier 400, the largest terminal at the Port of Los Angeles, where I was proud to welcome the first 18,000 TEU ship to call at an American port in December 2015. That day, APM Terminals and the women and men of the ILWU leapt into action, dispatching the ship's cargo to destinations throughout our region and the country. This partnership between the Terminal and the ILWU has driven cargo volume at the Port of Los Angeles to record levels. Before the Board today is an appeal from the ILWU over the granting of a coastal development permit at Pier 400 for infrastructure improvements that could facilitate the introduction of automated equipment. The decision before the Board may have far-reaching impacts on the pace of automation at our port, and could define how the port will compete and sustain jobs into the foreseeable future. Confronted by a matter of such importance, I ask that the Board take full advantage of the up to 28 calendar days afforded by Section 6.1.6.6.1 of the Portmaster Plan, to consider the facts and arguments laid out today by port staff, the union, the employer, and the public. Additionally, I invite the ILWU and APM Terminals to convene at City Hall for discussions, which I would be pleased to facilitate. In parallel, these discussions should serve as the basis of a new task force to explore automation and its impacts on the future of the Port of Los Angeles and others across the state. Working together, I am confident we can arrive at a solution that strengthens the port, preserves jobs, introduces green technology, and ensures future generations to continue to benefit from Los Angeles' place at the heart of an interconnected global economy. Sincerely, Eric Garcetti, Mayor. I'd like to thank the Mayor for sending this letter, and we hear his request. Regardless of what we decide at the end of the meeting today, I'd like to make it clear that all written and oral testimony is taken today at this hearing. So no additional submissions, including public comment, will be accepted on this item after today. So if you have something to say, please stay here, and note that this is your opportunity to do so. I will now turn it back to Amber to go through our next steps.
Thank you, President Lee. Item 2 is the Harbor Department Staff Presentation with Jean Soroka. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam President, Commissioners, distinguished guests, members of the public, Harbor Department staff, and the International Longshore Warehouse Union, along with the Pacific Maritime Association and AP Mohler Terminals. I'll begin my presentation this morning on the question that is before the Board here today. Was the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit 18-25 for APM Terminals issued consistent with the Certified Portmaster Plan and the California Coastal Act? Staff recommendation to the Board. We ask that you find the Level 1 CDP 18-25 was issued in compliance with the Portmaster Plan and the California Coastal Act, and to adopt the findings of fact contained in the public hearing staff report. As background, per the California Coastal Act and the Portmaster Plan, a coastal development permit is one that is required for development within the Harbor Department's coastal zone jurisdiction. Before the Board today is a Level 1 Coastal Development Permit. A Level 1 Coastal Development Permit is defined as minor in nature and does not require a public hearing. Three requirements must be met to issue a Level 1 Coastal Development Permit. One, minimum coastal resources are involved. Two, only minimal change in land and/or water use, and in the density or intensity of the land use and water area will occur. And three, there are no significant adverse environmental impacts. Further, per the Portmaster Plan, the Executive Director is designated with the authority to approve or deny applications for Level 1 Coastal Development Permits. But these permits only become effective when they are reported in writing to the Board of Harbor Commissioners. The Executive Director's determination of approval or denial for a Level 1 Coastal Development Permit may be appealed to the Board of Harbor Commissioners. APM Terminal's Level 1 Coastal Development Permit Number 18-25 began on November 5th, 2018, when the Harbor Department received an application for port permit from APM Terminals. This project seeks to modernize APM Terminal, which includes landslide infrastructure changes necessary to effectively operate battery-electric-powered equipment. Infrastructure changes include the installation of charging stations for equipment, permanent scaffolding to create a vertical racking system for refrigerated containers, traffic barriers and fencing for drainage hauler safety, and small antenna poles to enhance existing Wi-Fi network. The APM Terminal's Level 1 Coastal Development Permit 18-25, this proposed project description was found to be in compliance with the requirements for a Level 1 Coastal Development Permit, approved by the Executive Director, and agendized to be reported at the Board of Harbor Commission Meeting on January 24th. On January 23rd, 2019, I specifically was asked to pull this permit, 18-25, from the Board's agenda on January 24th, to which I complied immediately. The Coastal Development Permit 18-25 was further agendized at the Board of Harbor Commission Meeting, February 21st, 2019, in Wilmington. On February 21st, 2019, this permit was appealed, and on March 6th, we are here today and have noticed for this meeting on March 21st. In conclusion, the staff recommendation is to find that the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit was issued in compliance with the Portmaster Plan and the California Coastal Act. We ask that you adopt the findings of the fact contained in the public hearing staff report. Thank you.
Item 3 is the appellant to present their case on noncompliance with Local AS. I'm sorry? Oh. The appellant to present their case as to noncompliance with the Coastal Act Master Plan.
Madam President, Commissioners, my name is Mark Mendoza. I'm the President of the ILW Local 13. Today, we are here to discuss the permit request by MERC that seeks to automate our ports and eliminate jobs that support, uplift, and keep the South Bay region booming. As we have seen throughout history, multi-billion-dollar corporations shamefully blame state and federal mandates as a reason to kill jobs. In this situation today, MERC is pointing at the CEQA requirements as the reason for eliminating middle-class jobs that provide better pay and benefits. If the Port of Los Angeles approves this permit request, it will most ultimately ensure the economic demise of the Southern California region. It is also important to note that the Port of Los Angeles operates and comforts, facilitates one in nine jobs in the five Southern California regions. Thousands of longshoremen and women rely on the ports to not only sustain themselves, but also their partners, childrens, and communities. This proposal is not about clean air and streamlining business practice. It's about MERC maximizing their profits at all costs necessary. In just 2018, the Port of Los Angeles moved more cargo than any time in its 111-year history, racking up 9.4 million TEUs. It is the third consecutive year of record volumes for the Port of Los Angeles for containerization's trade, and the most cargo moved annually by a Western Hemisphere port. Who created this economic surge? The men and women of the ILW, not robots. Even the President of PMSA states that the Port of Los Angeles continues to be the leader in cargo volumes, stating that these record volumes are reflection of the dedication and hard work of the port and all the supply chain partners. Labor is part of the goods movement process. To make matters even worse, MERC has manipulated the system to try and highlight the lack of incoming cargo to the port. In 2015 and 2017, the Department of Justice indicted three ocean freight executives in a long-running price-fixing conspiracy. Time and time again, we have seen these companies engage in illicit behaviors that benefit their profits and the market control, at the cost of killing jobs and driving the prices of all goods across the board for all Americans. Lastly, I will state that automation does not provide a solution to health and safety problems. Machines will continue to have glitches, and performances become even more or less predictable. As many news articles highlighted, and as what just happened this Monday at TRAPAC, for the sake of the economic prosperity, I respectfully request that the Port of Los Angeles vehemently denies the request and protects the communities and the members of the Southern California area. The ILW keeps our economy moving, not automation. I would like to defer the remaining time to my Vice President. Thank you, and long live the ILW.
Good morning, President Lee and honorable Commissioners. My name is Gary Herrera, Vice President, ILW Local 13. I was born and raised in San Pedro, where I still live here today. I'm a third-generation longshoreman, and for three generations of longshore work in the ports of Long Beach, it's enabled my family to thrive. My story is not unique, and this is why I stand here today on behalf of my community and my union. I'm asking you today to hold over and stop from this permit going, the Coastal Development Permit 18-25, APM Terminals. The consequences will likely be devastating if this permit is approved without time to thoroughly analyze its impact. As you know, a Level 1 Coastal Permit, as defined by the Portmaster Plan, is required for permits that are minor in nature, and are determined to have insignificant impact on the port's surrounding environment. However, transitioning the largest terminal on the country's largest port to full automation will have major and significant impacts on the port and the surrounding environment. This Board must consider those impacts. APM, owned by MERC, will tell you that this permit is only to implement minor infrastructure improvements, and to install battery-operated equipment. They will say this permit is the only way to comply with the Clean Air Plan and create cleaner environment. But, as APM's Senior Director of West Coast Labor told me, the officers of my union in January, this is first and foremost about eliminating labor. This Board must hold off and deny this permit until the consequences, transition to a full automation, and the elimination of labor are evaluated. Behind the hundreds of jobs per day that will be eliminated by the humanless automated are hundreds of workers that contribute to the local and state economy. Longshore jobs are well-paid, and they're well-earned. Longshore jobs support families, they pay taxes, they contribute to economies well beyond our port. Without jobs, there will be no economy. Robots do not pay taxes. Robots do not shop in our communities. Robots do not pay rent. They don't buy homes. They don't lease office space. They don't deposit money. Robots do not attend LA Fleet Week. They don't go to waterfront events. They won't use the waterfront promenade, the Bike Pass, the California Coastal Trail, all of which are listed in your master plan. Number four of increasing access to the waterfront, robots do not do that. If this permit is approved, our community will be on its way to the next Detroit, and it will have started here, in this forum, with this Board. Additionally, there are so many unanswered questions. For example, will we still know where the automated equipment, and therefore all 484 acres of Terminal 400 will be controlled from? Will it be another state? Or will it go to a developing country where the workers are paid unlivable wages? Because for APM, a foreign company, this is about cutting labor and saving money. Does this Board want to take on the responsibility for that? With this permit? This permit, while this permit does not specify installing a 5G network, a simple Google search will show you that based on the equipment purchased, is that it needs 5G to run. The same Calmar equipment APM is purchasing on a 5G network in Hamburg, Perth, and Brisbane, and if that 5G network is planned here, we should know if there are any environmental or health risks associated with 5G. Are there any risks to the bird sanctuary at Pier 400? Will there be a risk for a data breach where our security will be in question? I have provided to the panel up there some information about the 5G for your review. It is the ILW, as to cargo efficiency, we've seen that productivity in the two existing automated terminals is down significantly compared to the terminals that the men and women of the ILW work. It is the labor that broke the ports.
Mr. Herrera, please wrap up. Your time is nearly done. Thank you.
How much time do I have?
Thank you.
Actually, none, but go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll wrap up.
Thank you.
APM will tell you today that the ILW PMA contract allows for automation, but the issue of automation is bigger than the ILW PMA contract. It's about the community, the economy, and ultimately, the future of the middle class. It is not, it is not this Board's responsibility to negotiate our contract. It is your responsibility to the citizens right here in our community. I'll, right now. You guys released in January 16, a port release, a quote by you. "The LA Port has a strong commitment to developing sustainable operations that benefit Southern California's economy and quality of life." You have three pillars of values: business, environment, and community. I'm asking that this Board treat each one of those fairly and equally. Thank you.
We have a couple of questions from the Commissioners, please. Commissioner Middleton.
I have a question for Mr. Herrera. He could come back to the podium.
Gary. Come back to the podium, please.
No. Mr. Herrera, you made reference in your presentation to 5G terminology. I had a meeting a few days ago with Mr. Oaks and Mr. McKenna, and Mr. Oaks' position was that they do not intend to use 5G technology, that that is a technology solely for consumer products. Is that the information you were given? And if you agree they won't use 5G, why are your comments relevant?
So, Ms. Commissioner, thank you for the question, and I can tell you right now, that was not the information that was given. As a matter of fact, there's a lot of unanswered ones that we don't have that we have asked. The simple Google research would show you that it's not just for consumer. There are ports around the world that are be running off 5G as we speak. MERC would like to tell you today that it's a antenna Wi-Fi, but tomorrow, when no one's looking, is 5G. And then tomorrow is when we're affected. So what we're asking MERC is, give us all the information that they've been lacking to give us. A simple Google search will tell you that the Calmar Strad, in which they're bringing it to the terminal, is run off of 5G.
Commissioner Renwick.
Thank you so much for all of your time today and your very eloquent remarks. I just have a couple of quick questions. The first, and really what I want to do is ask you what I anticipate, because I read all the materials, 1,300 pages, thank you very much, of materials. I'm trying to anticipate what the terminal operator's going to say. So I just want to give you a chance to answer directly what they're going to say. I expect that they're going to say that the union negotiated bargain for an agreement in which the terminal operator has the right to automate. Is that true?
So, I would say this, of course it's true, but I'm speaking as a community member. I'm speaking on the effects it's going to have on my community, and what's going to happen in the future for our kids, the people that live there, the realtors, the businesses that we patronize, and I didn't get a chance to talk about this, but we have over 10,000 signatures from the community members. We have over 200 people from businesses. I'm here to speak on, not that contract issue. I'm here to speak on the bigger issue, and the bigger issue is the economy, and my community, and the surrounding economy, and the state of California, and everything around it.
And my second question is, we do have some experience with automation at TRAPAC, and now across the bay in Long Beach. Has that led to a loss of jobs?
Absolutely, and I would say a loss of efficiency as well. Absolutely. So the answer to that question is yes to loss of jobs, and yes to loss of efficiency. They cannot compete with the ILW labor.
Do we have a quantification of how much employment at those terminals has fallen since they were automated?
So at this moment, I'll tell them ahead, I would not want to give you a false answer, so I would say I don't have it right now.
Commissioner Middleton.
Mr. Herrera, following up on Commissioner Renwick's questions, do you have any information as to the actual level of container moves at TRAPAC? I believe you said it was less efficient. I have heard the number that there are 17 moves per hour, or they've never achieved 200 per day. Do you agree with that information?
I absolutely agree with that information.
And is that information indicating that the efficiency of an automated terminal is considerably below what it would be if manned by ILW men and women?
Absolutely below what the ILW do.
Commissioner Peruzzi.
Mr. Herrera, I have a question for you. We good? Someone said, "Slow down." We good? Okay. Mr. Herrera, I have a question. I know we're not here to talk about the contract, but how often did APM reach out to the local unions on what the plan was going forward, and when did that occur, if it occurred?
Okay. So thank you for asking that question, and I'm glad you brought that up. We We have a section in our contract that talks about reaching out to the union and giving us fair notice about what's coming down the pipe. They gave us, the local, a 24-hour notice of what was going on. Now, I won't lie to you. Last year, when they had a different labor relations rep working for their company, he came and talked to us. He sat across the table, and he said, "We're thinking about going automation." We said, "Fine." I'm sorry. So the LRC rep that worked at APM about a year ago met with us and said, "We're thinking about going automation." We said, "Okay. What type of machine are you bringing in?" "I don't know." "Where are you going to start?" "I don't know." It's just something that they told us, I want to tell you. So then when Dave Aron was on the Harvard Commission Board, we reached out and we said, "Is there any permits in there?" "Nope." And for months, nothing was done. Then we get an email that we have a meeting the very next day. Where MERC talks about, "We're going to go fully automated. We've already ordered 37 machines, and we're not going to hide behind the Clean Air Act." As a matter of fact, here's how it's going to happen. We're here for labor savings. And it was directly said at that point, "If you want to go outside," because I know that was a blow to your gut, "go take a minute." You want to talk about the notice? We got 24 hours notice here in Local 13, Southern California.
So I asked that question because is there anything in the contract that stipulates that they should reach out to you? That they should make sure you're agreeing upon? Because what I can tell, there's some stuff here. I just want to hear from you.
Section 15 talks about the employers reaching out to the union.
I think it's 1511. And, and, no, I can hear him. I think it's 1511 and 1504. So that's why I asked the question, because there's an element here that basically says in order to avoid disputes, employers shall make every effort to discuss with the union and advance the introduction of any major change in operations. And that there's an element here that says parties need to agree on certain ground rules to implement the principles stated above. Did any of that happen?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And if I may say before, I'm done.
Sorry, Mr. Herrera, can you take a step slightly, or a couple inches back from the microphone? We have a couple commissioners who are having trouble hearing.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Is that better?
So, so before I step down, I'll make this very clear. We are not here for our contract. We take care of that business behind closed doors with PMA and the companies and ourselves. I am here as a community activist. I'm here to represent the community. And I'm here to tell you that this is going to be devastating to our community if this is happening. And this is why I'm putting it across the board. Not for my contract, but for my community.
We have one more question for you. Commissioner Middleton.
Perhaps a final question for you. I could ask you two, five, 10 more questions about the specifics, but we're here for a public hearing. I want to hear from all the other speakers. So I'll just ask you a general question, even though I could break it down in terms of how many phases are there going to be in the rollout? How many machines are going to be purchased? How are they going to be purchased? How are you going to be trained? In general, do you believe that you have been provided with sufficient information to allow the union to determine even what is going to happen at Pier 400?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Renwick.
And again, I just want to make sure I fully understood your answer, because it really did surprise me. Your position, the position of the ILWU, is that automating this facility comports with the union's agreement with the PMA.
So, I want to say this, and not to be argumentative at all. I'm here as a community member, speaking on behalf of the community. You don't have the right to talk about our contract, and I'm not asking to negotiate it. I'm here as a community member to talk about the economy and the devastation to our jobs, to the businesses, to our homes. So if you want to ask that question, I've answered it, and I don't want to keep beating it. But we do know it's in our contract. But for me, I'm here as a community member.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, item four is the applicant to present their case as to the compliance with the Coastal Act master plan.
Good morning, Madam President.
Hey, excuse me, one second. Report staff, can you, is it possible to turn a couple of these speakers a little towards the front or one of them? It's really hard for us to hear. We're trying, but we can hear the crowd, but sometimes it's hard to hear the speakers. One would work. It doesn't have to be all the way around, just a little bit.
If it's too difficult and it's going to fall, please don't do it. There you go.
Thank you.
Feedback. They're going to bring one in.
Good morning, Madam President. Commissioners, my name is John Oaks. I'm the Senior Director for West Coast Labor Relations and Regulatory Affairs with APM Terminals in Los Angeles. With me today is Peter Jabour, our General Counsel for APM Terminals Pacific, and Jim McKenna, the President and CEO of the Pacific Maritime Association. As everyone in the room is now aware, at Pier 400, we have initiated a project to modernize our terminal. The project includes the introduction of self-guided container handling equipment. As you know, last November, we filed an application for a Level 1 coastal development permit, which is referred to as a CDP. As noted, the modifications to our terminal are minor. They include infrastructure improvements that will support electric equipment, permanent scaffolding, so ILW mechanics can attend to refrigerated containers that will be stacked, vehicle traffic barriers, additional fencing, and antenna to enhance our existing Wi-Fi network. I think there may be...
Sorry, we can see your hands. Please be respectful of the speaker's time. Thank you.
I think there may be some confusion regarding Wi-Fi versus cellular technology. And it may be further exacerbated by the Wi-Fi that we use is measured on the spectrum at a 5 gigahertz level. And that might be where some of the 5G misunderstanding comes from. Over in cellular world, I think most of us have a phone now that is a 4G. There's a next generation of technology that's being introduced, which is referred to as 5G. I'm not a, I'm not an expert on telecommunications, but from what I understand, the standard for 5G cellular service is actually being released sometime next month for about a two-year review before the international standard is agreed upon. I'm not aware of any 5G cellular service that's available anywhere in the U.S., although I do think there are some vendors who are attempting to market a 5G telephone. But just to clarify any confusion between the Wi-Fi that we currently have at the terminal, that same Wi-Fi system will be used for the new machines. The new machines are not compatible with a cellular network, either the 4G now or at some point in the future if 5G becomes the national standard. As stated in the staff report, the CDP was approved in January. I request that the Harvard Commissioners deny the appeal of the approved CDP. And as recommended by staff, I request that the approved CDP be issued to APM Terminals. This concludes my remarks. Jim McKenna is here with me and available if you have any questions regarding the PMA/ILW agreement. And now I'll turn it over to my counsel, Peter Jabour, who will address the CDP.
Madam President, Commissioners, my name is Peter Jabour, and as John alluded, I'm the Vice President and General Counsel of APM Terminals Pacific. You've heard a lot this morning from the speakers before me about facts, opinions, and I want to bring us back to the legal standard before the board today, because that is what we're dealing with. Simply put, there is no legal basis for this appeal to be granted. To the contrary, the law and the facts are clear. The Executive Director and his staff's report is comprehensive, complete, and correct, and should be upheld. The proposal is to implement minor infrastructure improvements to the terminal, to modernize its operations and improve its efficiency. Not only are there no significant adverse environmental impacts, quite to the contrary, as our submissions have shown, there are significant environmental benefits. We have not seen, and the board has not received, any credible evidence to suggest that this proposed CDP is not in compliance with the Port Master Plan or otherwise has significant adverse environmental impact. That simply hasn't been introduced, alleged, or contradicted. With respect to the 5G issue, as Mr. Oaks alluded to, there may be confusion with gigahertz as it relates to 5G. But just as an abundance of a caution, we've prepared, our environmental consultant has prepared and will submit to the board today for the review, review of the Wi-Fi technology that exists at the terminal today, which will be the same technology that's used to support this equipment. And so we'll have that for the board's review if there are any questions. There has been, on the one hand, we've seen written submissions that suggest there's 5G, there's allegations of equipment. We have not seen any written evidence, submissions. The union has said they haven't received any information about the technology that be implemented, but on the other hand, make assertions that it'll be 5G. We hope that this support will put that to rest. Additionally, there have been allegations with respect to impact on the lease term, and we believe that the Executive Director and the staff report adequately addresses those concerns. The words of Section 3.32 of the master plan, I think, are particularly instructive, because the first prong of your view is whether or not this coastal development permit is consistent with the master plan. Section 3.3.2 of the master plan reads, "Port tenants should be encouraged to modernize their facilities and implement new technology, including automated container terminal technology." APM Terminals is meeting its obligations and furthering the goals of the port. We have followed the process and complied with law. The Executive Director and his staff have been entrusted to carry out the interests of the port, and we believe they have successfully done so again. Their report and the law is clear. The appeal should be denied and the permit approved. Objections to automation generally are not part of the coastal development process. We believe Section 3.32 of the Port Master Plan clearly puts that forward. I think we learned today as well, there is no dispute about the contract language in the collective bargaining agreement. The port has been continually modernized since its inception, since the story, since 1936, when the first ILW came into being, since the advent of containerization. Modernization is a continuing and dynamic process, and the port and the larger community should embrace this without the fear of change. I would now like to hand over the rest of the time to Jim McKenna, the President of the Pacific Maritime Association. I'll ask him to address quickly the comments, because there are the rights, but there's also significant benefits that the ILW has successfully negotiated for the exact type of proposal that is before the board. Thank you.
I'd like to remind the audience again that those who are disrupting this meeting will be removed from the premises. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. I am Jim McKenna, President and CEO of the Pacific Maritime Association. The PMA negotiates and administers labor agreements with the ILW. We have 70 member companies, including APM Terminals and MERC. The agreement between the ILW and PMA have played an important role in the success of West Coast ports. This dates back to the 1960s with the Mechanization and Modernization Agreement that ushered in an era of containerization on the West Coast. The three most recent contracts have further advanced innovation on the waterfront. The 2002 contract allowed for modern technology. The 2008 contract explicitly authorized automation. And the 2014 contract featured an improved arbitration process as well as a 40-hour-per-week pay guarantee plan for longshore workers. Thanks to the 2002 contract, we were able to replace clipboards and chalk with scanners, GPS, and optical character recognition technology. Since that landmark 2002 agreement, the waterfront has thrived, with the ranks of longshore members in Southern California growing by more than 60%. The next agreement signed in 2008...
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. If I may ask you to please wrap it up.
The next agreement signed in 2008 explicitly acknowledged employers' right to automate and gave ILW expanded maintenance jurisdiction and the ability to maintain automated robotic equipment. As the PMA executive who led negotiations for the 2008 and 14 contract, I can tell you with 100% certainty that APMT and other employers have the absolute right to automate their terminals. I ask the Commission to respect the labor agreement the parties have negotiated and to rule on the appeal based on the specific requirements of the Level 1 coastal development permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Renwick.
Oh, sir. Sir.
Excuse me, sir, there are a couple of questions.
You're not done yet. Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. If someone could turn this speaker up, when that was facing this way, I could hear. Now that we don't, now that that one, can you turn it up? Okay, so a couple of quick questions. The first thing I think you just said, but I want to confirm, is that the currently automated terminals, Trapec and across the bay in Long Beach, there have been no loss of employment. Is that correct?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that the port complex...
I understand. What you are saying isn't that those, hold on, everyone, please.
We expect everyone to be respectful in this hearing. Those who are disrupting will receive a warning from an officer, and after that warning is not heeded, you will be removed from the hearing. Please be respectful of the speakers.
Okay, so what you just said was that overall at the port complex, with its two automated facilities and its, what?
Eleven.
Nine conventional facilities, has lost no employment?
No, it's gained employment.
It's gained employment. Okay, thank you very much.
The entire complex, yes.
Okay, okay. The second question I have for this is that there have been, in the materials that I read, one thing that surprised me was that there were questions asked of the PMA regarding employment levels and what do you guys anticipate the employment levels being at APMT after you implement this equipment? And your answer, the answer was something to the effect of, we are not, you know, we haven't done this analysis yet. But I find that somewhat implausible. But I find that somewhat implausible. Could you either answer that question, or can you explain why you didn't provide an answer?
The PMA does not know the type of operation they're running, what this equipment is capable of doing. The one that would be able to more clearly tell you how the equipment is going to work, what kind of manning is needed, is the operator itself.
But, and you guys don't have the operator's phone number.
The operator's sitting right here.
Okay, okay. So I'm asking the wrong guy. I should ask you, is that what you're saying?
He's going to know better than me. I don't know the details of what he's doing.
Fair enough. Put him up.
Mr. Oaks.
Thank you, sir.
Throw it right to him.
Thank you. So, in the materials, John, the, or Mr. Oaks, sorry, that you guys answered the union's question by saying, "We don't know yet." But no business in the world ever invests money without first doing estimates. Please, 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 please. Order, please. So can you now answer the question, or if you are not going to answer the question, can you explain why you won't answer the question?
The union filed an RFI, a request for information regarding the impact to the labor force as a result of our project. The answer I wanted to provide them, I wanted to be accurate, because I need to defend it. I now have that answer, and I will formally respond to the union through the RFI process and be prepared to sit down with them and tell them exactly, exactly what the number is.
Order, please. Okay. And now, a question that has come up a lot on the subject is allegation, I know, and so we're not going to, I'm not passing judgment on the contract and how it's employed, but it keeps, you know, you guys can say that it's not part of today's discussion, but I just read 1,300 pages, a lot of which you guys provided, that talked about it. So I figure I can ask a couple of questions about it. So there have been allegations that you guys have not followed the agreement in terms of providing sufficient notice and engagement and conversations. Is that true or false? And can you give more details around it?
Discussions with the union about this specific project and our intention to automate all of the machines that worked against the vessel operation and in the yard started 12 months ago in March of 2018. Those discussions have continued since. Now, I will tell you that I tried to follow some protocol. There was an international election last summer, so we dealt with the old group, and we were going to give the new group the same courtesy. As you may be aware, that election was challenged, so I had on the calendar for Jim and I and our North American executive to visit with the union in September. We postponed that meeting. We're scheduled again to go in November. We postponed that meeting. The union actually went into caucus in December, resolved their elections, seated their new leadership. We were on the schedule to see them in January. The union canceled that meeting, so I personally went up the following week to advise the new leadership of what our intentions were, so we could reengage with this conversation.
Thank you. And then, my final question is that there have been a lot of allegations that automated equipment is not as efficient. And I guess my question to you is, you know, in some respects, I think that's almost irrelevant for me to decide, because, you know, you guys are the ones who are investing the money. Presumably, you know what's efficient and what's not, but is it, you know, the McKenzie study said that there's been challenges with it, and we've certainly seen challenges here. Why do you want to deploy an expensive technology that is inefficient? Or is it more efficient than alleged?
So if you look at our operation and where we're going to use the new machines against the vessel, we're confident that we can sustain our existing vessel productivity. Where we think we'll see the gains in efficiency is in our yard operation, where we transfer the containers from the yard to the outside trucker. We're going to redesign the yard, which is why all the concrete barriers and fencing are part of the permit application. We're going to reduce the transit path for the truck, and we think with our new processes that we will be able to bring the cargo to the truck in a more efficient manner than we currently do, which should, in turn, reduce what's called the trucker's turn time, the amount of time that the trucker is actually on our facility. This is an important metric for the drayage folks. So our overall efficiency will be to that segment of the supply chain, our ability to deliver import cargo to the outside trucker.
Just a couple more quick questions, and I apologize. Another question, and thank you so, for your very factual answer. So your basic answer there is, we think it's going to be more efficient, and here's why. So thank you. My next question is that some of the papers submitted, you guys said that a primary motivation for installing this equipment is in order to be, in order to work within the Clean Air Action Plan. The Clean Air Action Plan does put a lot of emphasis on electric equipment, but it doesn't talk about whether or not that electrical equipment is manned or unmanned. My question to you is, why is it advantageous, or why is it essential that that equipment be unmanned? Because you're not contesting the fact that you're planning on using unmanned equipment. So why is it important that it be unmanned?
So the selection of the equipment, the fact that it'll be electric-powered will allow us to comply with the Clean Air Action Plan and with the CARB requirements, but as I think I've been candid, we're not hiding in back of those requirements. We're going with the automated machines to allow us to remain competitive in this marketplace.
Commissioner Perosi.
I tell you, so the thing I'm struggling with the most here is the outreach with the workforce. Every day, I'm in meetings with the union where I work, so that we're working shoulder to shoulder on whatever comes our way, and that we're in lockstep. I struggle that we are even here today, because if the outreach was proper, I don't believe we'd be here today. We'd have a plan going forward. So I'm getting to my question. When I sit here, I hear both sides, as the stuff I do out here and being a local guy. So what I'm struggling with is there were 29 questions submitted by the union after all this started, it appears to me, and I saw the responses. I'm struggling with why we waited so long to get everyone lined up on what was coming. As you mentioned, it's been in the contract, it's not new, but we're talking about a huge change to our socioeconomics in San Pedro, Wilmington, and the Harbor area. When we say, when we, and I'm getting there, when we say we don't know, we know. In your application, it's very vague on the impact. It's very vague on how many jobs are going to stay or go. And I've been studying this document for two months, and in the Portmaster Plan under application process, 6.3, okay? Number four, name any persons the application knows to be interested in the proposed development. There are no names in the application. There are areas that are blank. What's the impact on jobs? We don't know. It's unknown. I want to understand how we make this investment decision without knowing.
I'll give you a two-part response.
Guys, please. Please, guys, and ladies.
We don't envision putting the machines into operation for another 15 or 16 months. For example, tomorrow morning, we're meeting with our maintenance vendor to go through the training criteria of how we're going to train our ILW mechanics to maintain these new machines. We do not have the machine here to touch and feel and play with yet. So there is a process as far as what the notifications, which is why some of those questions have not been answered yet. I can assure you, sir, they all will be. As far as the job loss, I now have that number, will formally respond to the union, but as you will appreciate, looking at the volumes of Pier 400 over the last 10 years, our volumes fluctuate greatly as we gain and lose steamship lines as our customers. So the loss of jobs is a moving target. It could literally change every quarter.
Okay, so then I would ask the port, I would ask the port a question. In the application process, 6.3 of the Portmaster Plan, it says that the applicant attests to the truth, completeness and accuracy of the contents of the application. I don't hear it's complete. How did it get through without the conversation? If we're going to talk about the Portmaster Plan, we should know what that means. So someone help me with that.
Commissioner, this is an application for a coastal development permit, and we're trying to determine consistency with the Portmaster Plan and the Coastal Act. The Portmaster Plan is a land use document, and so the questions that issue for us are going to be about its consistency with the Portmaster Plan, not additional extra procedural questions.
I guess when we say compliant to the plan, is it from page one to the end, or is it just a section? Because I've been spending time with the whole document, so when I hear compliance, it's with the plan, page zero to whatever, 85 or whatever the last one is. I'm not just looking at a section. So that's what I'm struggling with. We keep quoting sections, but the plan is the plan. It's a full document, and that's how I looked at it.
Under the Coastal Act, local jurisdictions are required to file local coastal programs if they want to have jurisdiction to issue coastal permits within their boundaries and within the jurisdictions of the four ports that have been defined by the Coastal Act. That local coastal program is called a Portmaster Plan, but it is still a land use document that is about implementing the Coastal Act. Some confusion is caused, because when you call something a Portmaster Plan, it creates the impression that this is the master document that governs all of the port's decisions, policies, procedures, everything about this port. But it is called a Portmaster Plan because that's what the California Coastal Act calls it, and that's what they require to be submitted, but it is still only a land use document. And the planning staff, when evaluating consistency with the Portmaster Plan, they view it in terms of the whole document, but it is still trying to identify the impacts on coastal land and water resources.
For me, I've looked at it as the whole document, and I will continue to look at it against the whole document. So we could talk about that after, but the whole thing is a Portmaster Plan, it's a document, it talks about procedures, processes, it's lacking certain definitions, like on what surrounding environment means, and I can go on and on. So we can keep moving forward.
Commissioner Middleton.
I have additional questions for Mr. Oaks, please. I want to thank my fellow commissioners for laying some great foundation questions, because what they have pointed out is what my main objection is, which is twofold. One, I think the application is simply deficient on its face, because it is vague and ambiguous. Secondly, so I have some specific questions for you about how you are going to proceed, and then what the results are that you hope to achieve. And I want to turn my attention, and yours, to the actual application you filed. It appears from both the answers you've given here today, what you've put in writing, and the answers you gave me just a couple days ago, that this is a staged operation, that it is complex, that as you just said, it's going to be a year to see if these machines can even talk to each other. So far, so good?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if that's true, why then, in your application, when asked the very clear and simple question, "The project is an initial phase of a larger development," you answered "No." Seems pretty clear, the answer is "Yes." Is there an answer, Mr. Oaks?
Yes, ma'am. I answered "No," because the project is going to entail the entire container yard. We intend to automate our facility.
Even though you agree that there are phases, you can't do it all at once, is that correct?
We can't do it overnight, no, ma'am. So the first process will be, the machines will arrive, we'll see if they're compatible with our terminal operating system, while concurrently, we train our mechanics to maintain them. And then we will implement the project from west to east as we move across our facility.
So you're going to do it one stage at a time? And another word for stage is phase, and you've said there are no phases.
Commissioner, I think it's important-- I think it's important to understand, there's a difference between whether development and construction will be done in phases versus whether the deployment of equipment will be done in an orderly manner, so as not to disrupt the competitiveness of the port. So the construction, which consists of the installation of the fencing, the barriers, the battery recharging stations, et cetera, that will be done at one time, in one piece. And that construction, which is what the answer in the application is getting at, will not be phased in a way that your question suggests. The rollout and deployment of equipment has to be done.
Mr. Mendez.
To be clear, this gentleman is representing the applicant, and as questions pertain to the applicant, he is permitted to speak on behalf of the applicant's group here. And to the extent that commissioners have questions, we do expect the responsive parties to be able to answer the questions of the applicants.
Continuing, Mr. Oaks, or the other gentleman. Again, on this question of employment, when you, and I'm going now, not by the contract, but by your application, you said that, we've talked about how it is that you manage to answer, that you have no idea the number of employees at the site. But when we, the question is asked, what is the total number of jobs created-- But when we, the question is asked, what is the total number of jobs created? You said zero new permanent jobs. Does that mean you do not intend to give the M&amp;R work that results from these new machines to the ILW mechanics? Because that's what you said, zero new jobs.
So the, the answer to your first question, ma'am, was I believe that question was in regard to how many construction workers would be involved with the projects, with the projects that were outlined for, for example, how many folks would be involved with the fencing piece versus the traffic barrier piece? That's how I interpreted that question, which I believe it refers to. As far as your second question, where I answered zero, I interpret that as the aggregate, as the aggregate result. Would there be any, any additional people employed at Pier 400 when we got done? It's my opinion, the answer is zero. But I'm not discounting the fact that our maintenance and repair work will be performed by Local 13 and that we have an obligation to train those folks to work on the new machines.
Okay. I don't want to belabor the point, Mr. Oaks, but your application speaks for itself. Question, estimated number of people at the site during construction, approximately 25. That's one question. Next, estimated number of employees at the site after the jobs completed. It will vary, unknown. Third question, total number of jobs created, none. That's what it says. My next set of questions go to the result of all this. You've said that you agree with the findings of fact by staff. So I assume that you would also agree with the findings of fact that says the project will not result in an increase of capacity for the terminal, correct?
Yes.
It will not be growth inducing, correct? That's what staff said. Do you agree with that?
The, the capacity of the terminal is a function of our throughput, which is a function of our ship-to-shore cranes, and that number will remain consistent.
Okay. So then let's get to the question, the other answer you gave in response to Commissioner Renwick. And that was, if there will not be an increase in capacity, and it is not growth inducing, and you've said the reason you were doing this is to remain competitive. Let's talk about what remaining competitive means. And now I'd like to specifically make reference to the fact that Commissioner Arian, my predecessor in this seat, talked for years about the social compact. And in fact, this is nothing new. As I was going through his old papers, I found the January 2005 Shipping and Trade News that features an article about Mr. Arian that says, "The ILW, take us with and reap the rewards." So I guess what you're telling us today, Mr. Oaks, is that to remain competitive, you're going to take it out of the backs of the longshoremen by cutting their labor.
Commissioner Renwick?
I do have a question, and this is not involving you guys. It involves staff. So I was thinking about the exchange between Commissioner, between Commissioner Perosi's excellent points and staff. And what I think Commissioner Perosi's points were, and also to some extent Commissioner Middleton's, is that the employment-related elements in the application were perhaps incomplete or confusing. But in my perusal of the Port Master Plan, there, there isn't any discussion about employment as being a factor in land use. So my question is, one, does the Port Master Plan, because I could have missed it, talk about employment? And is that a relevant factor in land use decisions, once the plan is written?
While employment is an important consideration for, for the, for the port and the city and the community, it is not an element of the Coastal Act. It is not an element of our land use decisions. Furthermore, the questions of employments, employment that is asked on the applications are strictly speaking not necessarily part of the Coastal Act requirements. And the issue of permanent jobs or growth inducing jobs, and our Director of Environmental Management might be better able to speak to this, but my understanding would be that growth inducing jobs would be developments that create so much additional growth that the existing infrastructure of the city would not be able to support the additional influx of population and thus create an additional environmental impact. It is not about specifically if a project would create additional, draw additional cargo or things like that. Again, and a land use and an environmental impact document on the coast, not an economic impact document, nor is that part of the consideration for consistency with the Coastal Act.
Okay. So I think, to summarize, what you're saying is that we all know that employment factors are vitally important for the port in its strategy and decision-making process, and we are all about creating new jobs. But as to the narrow question of level-one permits, employment factors aren't relevant? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, because the purpose of this analysis, the purpose of this analysis is consistency with the Coastal Act. It would be similar to the city's health inspector giving a bad grade, letter grade to a restaurant because of that company's wage policies or its signage, et cetera. Even if it is an important question that draws attention, it is not in the scope of the Health Department to analyze that. And when the Planning Department analyzes the coastal development permit consistency, it is looking at the land use question, aside from all other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Middleton has a follow-up.
And I'd like to offer an alternative interpretation, Mr. Keenan, for everyone's consideration. And that is, talking about the specifics of the coastal development permit, on page 43, Section 6.42, talks about a level-one CDP as being minor in nature and determined to have insignificant impacts on the port or the surrounding environment. No significant adverse environmental impacts. I'd like us to focus for a moment on alternate definitions of environmental impacts. When I hear environment, I pretty much think about the effect and the interaction between people and their surroundings, science and otherwise. So when I think of environmental impact, I certainly think on the effects this will have on humans, like thousands of jobs lost and hundreds of businesses closed. To me, that is a significant environmental impact. And I'd just like to be reminded of the fact that as a new commissioner, today marks 14 days on the job. One of the things, one of the things we are told is that we have responsibility for the management supervision and control of the land and water areas. That when we talk about the Port Master Plan, Section 3.21 says development should minimize conflicts. Now, I dragged all this around with me because what the ILWU produced, and I'd like to commend them for it, is 11,000 signed petitions. Hundreds of letters from businesses, and I'm looking forward to hearing from the politicians. But it appears to me that there are plenty of conflicts in this CDP.
Commissioner Perosi?
So I want to echo what Commissioner Middleton said. So when I look at the CDP, I guess it depends what the definition of surrounding environment is. And so when I look at it the same way that she does, when I think about environmental impact, we just did a socioeconomic study for one of the other ports, I think it was released on, in 2017. It's on our website if you want to Google it or whatever. It talks about the very things that we're concerned about, including employment, income, population, and housing characteristics. We have potential socioeconomic outcomes that are evaluated in terms of the effects on the proposed project. Again, that's why we're here today. What is the bigger picture here and what's it telling us when it comes to social economics? And I echo your point there, Commissioner Middleton. So really, it comes down to definition. It comes down to completeness. I mean, even in the application, fencing is not checked. The box for fencing is not checked. There's holes in everything. So I just want to echo your point, Commissioner.
Commissioner Renwick?
So I just want to make sure, because we're just looking it up. This is, this is really fascinating. So the term environment is not defined in, in this document. There are lots of references to it, and the references are to things like biological resources, air pollution, that more narrowly construed notion of environment. I just want to make, process is very important to me. And there is a significant argument that what is at issue here is not the big picture issue of automation and employment, which is vitally important, but a much more narrow issue. And so what I'm trying to understand is exactly how broad what we are supposed to decide is. So is environment defined either here in this document or through Chris Crannan's department, an issue that deals with things like, you know, job levels?
The Port Master Plan, because it has been required by the Coastal Commission and the California Coastal Act to show how we are complying with their mandate to preserve California's coast and ocean resources, the Port Master Plan addresses how we're protecting that environment, that natural environment. And if you look at the Coastal Act itself, that is what it is talking about. It's talking about coastal resources, it's talking about species, it's talking about scenic resources, the ability for people to visit the waterfront and enjoy oceans. It does not talk about socioeconomic impacts as part of what their mandate is because their job is to protect the coastal environment. And so our definition is not defined in the Master Plan because we are following how we are implementing the Coastal Act. And so while there are broader definitions of environment, and it can be very important for the commissioners and the port to take into account a lot of other factors besides just the, the natural environment, the coastal environment, that gets addressed through different venues. It can be misleading, again, with similar words, but if I were to deny a coastal development permit because I felt that there was a hostile work environment at, at an applicant's place of business, I would be acting outside of scope. I'm limited to dealing with the impact on the coastal environment in this context. And that's how we address it here.
So your answer is, as it pertains to the coastal plan and a level-one permit, it does not include employment? Now, the second issue is, does this, because this was brought in front of us, one of the requirements that it be a level-one permit is that it not require a new EIR. Is employment impact a function of EIR, EIRs?
Sorry. My duty is to evaluate projects under the California Environmental Quality Act. The definition of environmental impacts are listed very clearly there, and my responsibility is to evaluate those impacts in accordance with those. Socioeconomics is not listed as part of the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act.
And can you also comment on some of the 5G discussion that's been going on?
I think, I think the comments that have been made were, were very clear. There is an important distinction between Wi-Fi antennas and cellphone towers. There is something called 5G, which is 5 gigahertz Wi-Fi. It's actually, some people have it even in their home. Cellphone, cellphone 5G is a new evolution of technology in cellphones that is underway and is to be developed. What was proposed to us is an expansion of the Wi-Fi network using Wi-Fi antennas, and that's what we analyzed.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Commissioner Perosi?
Mr. Keenan, you said that we don't look at the, the jobs in your assessment? Is that what you said?
Yes. That socioeconomics is not listed as something that I'm required to analyze as part of the California Environmental Quality Act.
You know, it's very interesting. We, I think what's at, the other thing that's at stake here is we, we tend to use in our talking points about how many jobs the port creates, one in nine in the region and all that. It seems like we talk about it on the way up. We don't talk about the impacts on the way down. And I think that's what everybody's worried about. So I don't know if there's a change we need to make in our process, but it seems like we're good about talking on the way up, but everyone's worried about where the bottom is. Are we racing to the bottom with employment? Where is the bottom? We want to keep growing. That's why everybody's here.
Commissioner Middleton?
You know, following up on Commissioner Perosi's point, I really think there are two discussions that need to be had. And unfortunately, we have not yet worked out the venue in which to have those. And maybe that is what's ahead of us. But it seems the two things that we're really talking about is, on the one hand, what is to be done with CDP Permit 18-25? What's the future of what's going to happen at APM? That's one discussion. Now, there's another discussion. And let me preface it by saying, I really don't like the word automation. I would much prefer, I would much prefer to talk about a just transition. Because when you talk about technology, there is a transition. You have to go from one point to another. But as one of the folks I've talked with in the last week said, learning about new technology doesn't have to be on the backs of jobs or our standard of living. So the really large question before us goes far beyond APM and far beyond the Port of LA. And politicians from Governor Newsom in various directions have talked about it. And that is very simply, although it's not simple at all, what's the future of work in America? How do we implement technology without destroying ourselves? And fortunately, we have an example right here in this port of how to do it. And that is, many of us remember the struggles that took place many years ago about China shipping. And the China shipping struggle allegedly started about the question of air pollution. China shipping moved forward. But in addition to that, the Clean Air Action Plan was developed. I believe we need to think in those broad-reaching terms on this question of just transition slash automation. What's the overarching question? Because we're here today about APM. But brothers and sisters, we know we're going to be here six months or nine months from now about Evergreen and another terminal and another terminal. So let's talk.
Commissioner Renwick?
I, I love your idea, and I think it's incredibly important. I do want to point out, and one thing I hope have all of your comments. I read all of your comments, and there were thousands of them. Some of them very erudite and philosophical, some, "I'm worried about feeding my kids," and everything in between. There are, the other side is this, the Port of Los Angeles is the cleanest port in the world. The Port of Los Angeles is the largest port in the Western Hemisphere. The Port of Los Angeles has lost 20% of its market share over the last 15 years. Every year, more boxes go elsewhere. Every year, more people are stealing our boxes. It costs 400 to 450 bucks to unload a box in Los Angeles or Long Beach. It costs 250 bucks to do it in the Gulf Coast. That is not labor's fault. We are the cleanest port in the world, being the cleanest port in the world is expensive. We have railroads that if you're taking a box from here to Chicago, our railroads charge $400 to $600 more per a box than the Canadian Central does. All of these are factors. The Panama Canal has been enlarged. The Port of Los Angeles, every box that comes in is sending roughly 125 bucks to the federal government, and the federal government uses that money to dredge our competitor ports. Everyone and their brother is trying to suck volume out of the Port of Los Angeles. The guys that are sitting up here, you know, remember we have the 2,000 of you and the six? The guys that are sitting up here have to spend all of their time worrying about that. And I know it's easy to demonize them as corporate America who's trying to rape and pillage the little guy. And based upon my observation, they do a very poor job of keeping you guys in the loop and on team. But facts are facts. We have lost 20% of our market share, and if we continue to lose it, we will become irrelevant. And not only your jobs, but everyone else's, the 1 in 9 will go away. We have to balance that, and we have to work together, and the kind of panel that Commissioner Middleton was talking about is vitally important. So I really support that, and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Perosi.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Commissioner Renwick said. Again, this comes down to being transparent and working shoulder to shoulder. That's how I view all of this, working together, having a transition plan, knowing the timing and the effects. Will jobs change? Will they grow? Will we have the right training? Will we and our children and our children's children be ready for the future? Because that's what's at stake here. And if we're not doing it together, it's not going to get done properly. So I think this is a show of what is required to move us forward, and I think that's what most people want, and I believe that's what the commissioners up here are communicating.
Commissioner Moreno-Linarez.
I'm sorry, I just have one comment unrelated to what everybody else here said. I would just ask our fellow commissioners, can we be conscious of all the people that are in the audience? I know we have electives that need to speak, I know we have labor that's sitting ready to speak, and I know we have a lot of questions, but we got paper, we can take notes, we can ask our questions afterwards, but can we please respect everybody else's time and give them a chance to say what they need to say?
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you to all the commissioners for your insightful questions, your vision and your candor. I think we are ready to move to public comment. Amber.
Moving on with Category B, Item 5 for public comment, there are three speaking categories, all of which have two minutes per category. First, Item 1, elected officials.
Thank you. I'd also like to note that elected officials does include our neighborhood council representatives. We will begin, thank you. Councilmember Joe Bustayino.
Thank you, Madam President, Commissioners. I don't know about you, but I thoroughly appreciate the line of questioning that's taken place here, and remind ourselves that you are the Citizen Oversight Committee of this port operation, so I appreciate those questions. I stand here, Commissioners, representing an incredible community, a district that helps fuel our local, regional, and national economy. I stand here representing my sister-in-law, Anna, my brother-in-law, Dominic, my brother-in-law, Jerry, my brother-in-law who works the tugs, Casey, my cousins, my aunts and uncles who are in the audience, and my dear friends who I have had the privilege to grow up with in this harbor area community. And what I've learned time and time again, as a kid of the port, born and raised in San Pedro, is that the ILW is underestimated, but not today. The ILW will never shy away from a fight. They are not just fighting for jobs, but for a way of life, and I'm here today because I will be with them every step of the way. This is personal for me, this is family, these are my neighbors, these are my brothers and sisters. And when we talk about these machines that are being presented and proposed, these damn machines can be run by humans, clearly. Now, when we talk about an environmental report, I can tell you clearly, the environmental impacts will be a loss of jobs to our community. So I feel that it is important to call for more time, to allow both sides to continue discussions, to seek a resolution. But during this time, I'd like to work with the mayor, the port, PMA, AMP, and ILW to seek some common ground and map out a path for the future. I ask you to honor Mayor Garcetti's letter that's before you, and I'm hopeful to be a part of those discussions with the mayor. We have a good track record of setting trends that other ports follow, as indicated.
Thank you, Council.
I would rather that we work together to bring something forward, so this doesn't have to come to city council, but I will exercise that option if I feel needed. And in the long term, we all need to work together toward achieving a green and efficient port while preserving our jobs. I believe we can and we should have both, and I know that our dearly departed Brother Davarian would have wanted us to continue working on his dream of training the next generation of ILW worker. Now, keep in mind, technology is not the enemy, achieving zero emissions is not the enemy, a lack of vision is the enemy. So let's focus on developing clean air technology and equipment that preserves and protects ILW jobs, not eliminates them.
Supervisor Janice Hahn.
Madam President, Commissioners, the Port of Los Angeles has long been an asset to the Harbor Area's local economy. It is a source of good, middle-class jobs that have supported generations of families and have in turn driven successful local businesses, from grocery stores to restaurants to sandwich shops. Any plan to automate terminal operations and cut jobs is a direct threat to our local economy and should be rejected by this Harbor Commission. I understand that APM argues that the upgrades they are proposing would reduce pollution from port operations. That is a worthy goal and one I'm proud to support, but they do not need to automate to achieve it. APM should switch to clean electric technology that exists today and can be proudly operated by the hard-working men and women of the ILW. We don't have to decide between clean air and good jobs, we can have both. And unfortunately, our ports are prime targets for terrorists and people trying to smuggle illicit materials into this country. Our dock workers are the first line of defense, and we can count on them to spot suspicious activity or cargo and report it to the authorities. A robot will never be able to catch the subtleties like a pair of human eyes and ears. It is my opinion that automating more terminals and replacing good human jobs leaves our port vulnerable. And let's remember, we don't own this port, not the City of Los Angeles, not the Executive Director. According to the State Tideland Trust, we hold this port in trust for the people of California. And what has always made this port strong are the people who work at it every day, and I'm proud to stand with my friends in the ILW, and I urge this Harbor Commission to reject staff's recommendation. You know, I'll end with a very strange sight that I saw just this past Sunday, because my home overlooks this port, I see all the ships coming and going, and a fully loaded CMG ship, CMA ship, fully loaded, instead of leaving the Port of Los Angeles and going out to sea, made a left turn to go to the Port of Long Beach. Why? It was not the failure of the men and women to unload that ship, it was because the infrastructure and the amp failed on our port. Let's not ever remember that it is the men and women who keep this cargo moving, not automation.
Ruby Duñez.
Good morning, Madam President, Commissioners. My name is Ruby Duñez, and it is an honor to be here today on behalf of our Assembly Majority Leader Ian Calderon, and I would like to read this letter he wrote. Before a decision is to be made by the Board, there should be a comprehensive impact analysis that considers the number of jobs lost and the potentially devastating impact to the neighborhoods, businesses, and my constituency. Allowing APMT MERS to transition to a fully automated terminal will greatly impact California families and the state's economy. I have supported funding for ports to upgrade to equipment that is less harmful to our environment. I have worked on and supported the purchase of zero or near-zero emission, human-operated equipment. We can improve the environment. We can improve the environment while supporting and maintaining well-paying jobs and a strong workforce. The Los Angeles Harbor Commission must do its due diligence, recognizing that displacing hundreds of jobs will negatively impact the communities surrounding the Southern California ports and beyond. I respectfully request that the Board take action. To hold over this permit, a thorough analysis into the impacts of this transition is necessary to protect workers and communities that help make California the fifth-largest economy in the world. Thank you.
Vivian Malauulu.
Good morning, Chairman and fellow Commissioners, as well as port staff and members of the public. My name is Vivian Malauulu. I am Vice President of the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees, and full disclosure, I am a very proud member of the ILWU. I stand before you this morning on behalf of the 140 community colleges in California. I have spoken to several of our fellow boards, and everyone is in agreement that automation is killing the future work opportunity of our community college students, as well as students throughout the Southland here, particularly in the region. One in eight jobs in America is directly related to the ports, and there are thousands of students out there who are looking forward to graduating from high school and entering the workforce. Where will our students work if we continue to automate? And although I have lots of statistics and data here prepared for you, which I have emailed to Gene Soroka and asked him respectfully to enter those statements into public record here, and hopefully he will distribute them to the Board, in the interest of time, I would just like to allow you the opportunity to consider that this harbor region serves thousands of not only ILW families, but families throughout other communities in the Southland that are impacted by the cargo that we move with rail and with outside truckers. And you will devastate this economy if you allow this permit, and I understand how consent agendas work, and I understand that it's a low-item priority, I get that, but it doesn't matter, because it will become a high-priority item if you allow it to pass. There is no offset for the lost wages benefits. Automation kills jobs. Any increase in potential productivity will not help our society, and it will decimate our society's safety net, which is work and jobs. It's wrong, it's immoral. This project change must not move forward as written or as applied.
Thank you for your time.
I'm almost at the end of my statement, please. Please do not slap students, educators in the face, do not slap neighbors and business owners and longshore workers in the face. This will not just affect us, it will put so many other people out of work. I'm asking you, the five of you up there, who oversee one of the greatest, strongest, and busiest ports in the world, to consider everyone when casting your vote today.
I ask you again to please respect the time, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote no for this. Thank you.
Elena Robles.
Good morning. I am here on behalf of Congresswoman Grace Napolitano, and I wanted to read a letter she sent dated March 15th this year. I am writing to request that the Los Angeles Board of Harbor Commissioners not take action on the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit Number 18-25 that was submitted as the APM Terminal's landslide infrastructure to operate battery-electric-powered equipment. Under the California Coastal Act, the port must review developmental proposals to make certain they are consistent with the port's master plan. Before a decision is made that will allow APMT MERS to transition to a fully automated terminal, the Board should complete a comprehensive impact analysis that considers the number of jobs that will be lost and the potentially devastating impact to the neighbors, businesses, and families in the community. The port's own master plan identifies increasing cargo terminal efficiency as a priority goal, yet it is widely acknowledged in the industry that automated terminals are less efficient. At this point in time, the Board does not know what the impact is of this automation project will be on the port's ability to contribute to future economic growth or to achieve needed improvements in cargo handling to meet the project increases in container traffic in the years ahead. I also question the justification that Clean Air Act compliance is driving the decision to automate. It is simply untrue that unmanned operations reduce emissions in excess of manned operations if electrified. The fact is, we can improve the environment while supporting and maintaining well-paying jobs and a strong workforce. I respectfully request that the Board stay this permit. A deeper look into the negative impacts of this transition is necessary to protect the workers and communities who contribute to make California the largest economy. Signed by Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. Thank you.
Francisco Carrillo.
she sent dated March 15th this year. I am writing to request that the Los Angeles Board of Harbor Commissioners not take action on the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit #18-25 that was submitted as the APM Terminal's landslide infrastructure to operate battery-electric-powered equipment. Under the California Coastal Act, the port must review developmental proposals to make certain they are consistent with the port's master plan. Before a decision is made that will allow APMT MERS to transition to a fully automated terminal, the Board should complete a comprehensive impact analysis that considers the number of jobs that will be lost and the potentially devastating impact to the neighbors, businesses, and families in the community. The port's own master plan identifies increasing cargo terminal efficiency as a priority goal, yet it is widely acknowledged in the industry that automated terminals are less efficient. At this point in time, the Board does not know what the impact is of this automation project will be on the port's ability to contribute to future economic growth or to achieve needed improvements in cargo handling to meet the project increases in container traffic in the years ahead. I also question the justification that Clean Air Act compliance is driving the decision to automate. It is simply untrue that unmanned operations reduce emissions in excess of manned operations if electrified. The fact is, we can improve the environment while supporting and maintaining well-paying jobs and a strong workforce. I respectfully request that the Board stay this permit. A deeper look into the negative impacts of this transition is necessary to protect the workers and communities who contribute to make California the largest economy. Signed by Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. Thank you.
Francisco Carrillo.
Good morning. My name is Francisco Carrillo. I'm the District Director for Congresswoman Annette Baragon. We submitted a letter at the last Board of Commissioners meeting expressing our concerns for the CDB Permit, and we stand by that statement, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you all have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Patterson.
Good morning, President Lee and Harbor Commissioners. My name is Sarah Patterson, and I'm here today on behalf of Assembly Member O'Donnell. I will be reading a portion of a letter that he submitted. Please excuse my cold. Dear Harbor Commissioners, I request the Los Angeles Board of Harbor Commissioners hold over the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit. There must be comprehensive impact analysis to consider the number of jobs that could be lost and the potential devastating impact to neighborhoods, businesses, and families in my district. During my tenure in the legislature, I have worked to secure funding for ports to upgrade their equipment to cleaner technologies that benefit the environment, and I support the purchase of zero- or near-zero emission, human-operated equipment. We can improve the environment while supporting and maintaining good-paying jobs and a strong workforce. The Los Angeles Harbor Commission must do its due diligence and analyze the negative impacts this permit could result in. Displacing hundreds of jobs, for example, would severely impact the communities surrounding the Southern California ports and beyond. I respectfully request the Board to delay taking action on this permit. A comprehensive look into the negative impacts of this transition is necessary to protect the workers and communities who contribute to make California the fifth-largest economy in the world. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Victor Ibarra.
Good morning, Harbor Commissioners and union brothers and sisters. Assembly Member Mike Gibson could not be here in attendance, but does send me with a short statement on his behalf. I would like to request that the ALI Board of Harbor Commissioners hold over the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit #18-25, APM Terminal's landside infrastructure to operate battery-electric-powered equipment. Before a decision is made by this Board that will allow APM MERS to transition to a fully automated terminal, there must be a comprehensive impact analysis that must consider the number of jobs that will be lost and the potentially devastating impact to the neighborhoods, businesses, and potentially families in the district that I stand and represent. I stand with the ILWU brothers and sisters and do not want to see any jobs lost, and I end with, "An injury to one is an injury to all." Thank you.
Thank you. Cody Bridges.
Good morning, Harbor Commissioners. My name is Cody Bridges. I'm with the Office of Assembly Member Al Marasucci. The Assembly Member could not be here today, but he's asked me to read a letter that he submitted. Dear Harbor Commissioners, I am writing to request that the Los Angeles Board of Harbor Commissioners postpone its decision on the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit #18-25. A comprehensive impact analysis must be conducted to consider the number of jobs that will be lost and the potentially devastating impact to the neighborhoods, businesses, and families in my district before a decision is made by this Board that will allow APM MERS Terminal to transition to a fully automated terminal. I have supported funding for ports to upgrade equipment that is good for our environment. I support the purchase of zero- or near-zero emission equipment that is human-operated. I believe we can improve the environment while supporting and maintaining well-paying jobs and a strong working force. Displacing hundreds of jobs will certainly impact the communities surrounding the Southern California ports and beyond. The Los Angeles Board of Harbor Commissioners must do its due diligence on the potential for negative impacts to the surrounding communities. I respectfully request that you hold off on granting the permit until an intensive analysis is performed on the possibilities of any negative impacts the transition could have on the economic health of our communities and the potential for the loss of hundreds of well-paying jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. David Juarez.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here today on behalf of Assembly Member Miguel Santiago, and I'm here to read a letter of support for ILWU and their efforts. I am writing to request that the Los Angeles Board of Harbor Commissioners hold over the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit #18-25, APM Terminal's landslide infrastructure to operate battery-electric-powered equipment. Before a decision is made, there must be a comprehensive impact analysis that must consider the number of jobs that will be lost and the impact to the communities, businesses, and families in my district. I have supported funding for ports to upgrade to equipment that is good for our environment as well as the purchase of zero- or near-zero emission equipment that is operated by a person. We can improve the environment while maintaining well-paying jobs and a strong working force. Displacing hundreds of jobs will certainly have negative consequences for my constituents and communities surrounding the Southern California ports. A deeper look into the negative impacts of this transition is necessary to protect the workers and communities who contribute to make California the fifth-largest economy in the world. Should you have any questions regarding my support, please feel free to contact me. Thanks.
Thank you. Matt Garland.
Good morning, President Lee and honorable Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning. My name is Matt Garland. I'm speaking this morning as an appointed representative of the Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council, and I'm going to acknowledge that I am a proud ILWU member. Like the Harbor Commission, the Neighborhood Council is a volunteer board with a mission to represent the interests of the community at large, including the families and the local businesses that depend on the port to provide economic opportunity. Following a discussion about the community impacts of this lease agreement, the socioeconomic and environmental impacts of port automation writ large, the Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council unanimously adopted the following resolutions. Number 1: Conduct a detailed analysis of the impacts of port automation on the Los Angeles economy before granting any permits that include port automation. Number 2: Develop and implement policies and legislation to provide for employment in the event of job loss or unemployment due to automation. Number 3: Conduct thorough outreach efforts to educate the people on the economic impacts of port automation. Number 4: Accelerate and expand workforce development to prepare and transition workers to adopt new technologies and employment opportunities in the Los Angeles Harbor area. Number 5: Coordinate workforce development efforts with harbor area colleges and unions. And number 6: Amend the Clean Air Action Plan to make it clear that port automation is not required to create zero-emissions port. Thank you.
Shannon Ross.
Good morning. I am Shannon Ross. I'm a Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council Executive Board Member, but I decided I'm going to use my time this morning to read a resolution that was passed through the Los Angeles County Democratic Party. Protecting Los Angeles and Long Beach port workers' jobs, whereas the International Longshore and Warehouse Union, ILWU, is at risk of losing up to 1,500 jobs with the possibility of loss of up to 10,000 jobs over the next 10 years if the terminal operators in the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach continue with plans to replace our community workforce with automated cargo-moving equipment. And this move to automation will effectively eliminate a huge sector of the Los Angeles Long Beach port community workforce in terms of direct jobs, not to mention indirect jobs, thereby depriving the working class of good-paying jobs and detrimentally impacting our local economy from small businesses to housing markets and our local and state tax base. And whereas, the December 2018 Mackenzie &amp; Company Report, as reported in numerous trade journals such as the 12/13/18 Journal of Commerce, found that terminals implementing automated terminals actually experienced a loss in productivity and that any benefits were outweighed by the cost at this time. And whereas, the Port of Los Angeles will decide March 21st whether or not to provide a permit to APM terminals that employs more than half the workforce at the Los Angeles waterfront, and that this permit would allow APM terminals to bring in battery packs that will run automated equipment by way of Wi-Fi network. Therefore, be it resolved that the Los Angeles County Democratic Party supports the efforts of the International Longshore and Warehouse Union to prevent the loss of thousands of jobs at the Port of Los Angeles and the Port of Long Beach.
Thank you, Ms. Ross.
We call upon the Los Angeles, we call upon the Port of Los Angeles to decline the permit of new job-killing automation until the environmental impact of such technology has been fully studied and reported.
Thank you again, Ms. Ross. Your time is concluded.
We also ask the economic and social consequences of such a major loss of jobs for our community be assessed and factored into permitting process.
Ms. Ross, your time is concluded. Thank you for your time. Thank you. Danielle Sandoval.
Good morning. My name is Danielle Sandoval, and I'm the President for the Harbor City Neighborhood Council. Our Neighborhood Council, first of all, I just want to say thank you to all the Neighborhood Councils that supported this, all seven of them, all the Neighborhood Councils in our region. Whereas, the November 2017 Clean Air Action Plan Economic and Workforce for the Clean Air Action Plan update indicates that Long Beach Port and Los Angeles Port supports 1 million jobs in California and 2.8 million jobs nationwide, which include longshore labor, freight forwarding, and logistics, and other transportation-related sectors. I really, all of our language actually came out of the Clean Air Action Plan, so I'm not going to read all of it. You have it before you. I'm just going to go ahead and read the resolve. Be it resolved that the Harbor City Neighborhood Council supports the recommendation for the ports to conduct a more detailed analysis on the direct negative impact of our economy and further recommend that the mayor's budget team assist and conduct, excuse me, that the mayor's budget team assist and conduct its own analysis on the negative impact on the city's economy. We urge that the Harbor Commission table the Level 1 Coastal Development Permit 18-25 until a resolution has been secured between terminal operator and with the International Longshore Warehouse Union and until the Clean Air Action Plan 2019 Implementation Second Quarter Progress Report has been generated to fully evaluate the direct impact on jobs and thoroughly, and are thoroughly addressed. We understand that new development initiatives and that partnerships with local colleges and trade unions ensuring workers are equipped to manage the transition with new technologies, however with no job loss, and at the same pay scales and higher. Investing our workforce rather than in automation secures our economic sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian Guzman. Christian? Christian Guzman? He's on his way up. He's on his way.
Hello. Thank you for listening to all of us. There's actually been some very good insight by the people and from the Harbor Commission and the elected officials. I'm glad that you represent us, but I think that the Harbor Commission should deny this permit because it's so vague and it seems incoherent, so I think that's the most important thing you should do. But in the meantime, you know, if this application or future applications get applied for that have automation in them, I think that this public, which is so excellently organized, should stay organized and coordinate with your elected officials, which obviously support jobs and support living wages, and ask them to change the laws to address some of these... We talked about the environmental impacts being narrowly defined. Maybe we should have them be more broadly defined. So stay organized, all of you. Coordinate with your elected officials, and we can make sure that when we move into the future, move with new technology, that we ensure a just transition and maintain a living wage for all and actually have jobs with dignity for our families.
We're now moving into the individual portion of public comment. I will be calling approximately seven names at a time. If you could please come up and line up behind the podium. As you come forward to speak, please state your name, and as the person in front of you concludes for the next person, please feel free to step forward and begin your remarks. Mark Mendoza, Danny Miranda, Joe Gasparov, Greg Mitri, Mark Jurisick, Ray Famalletti, Victor Martinez. Please come forward.
Mark Mendoza, President, Local 13. Truly, I am a member of the community. I'm a vet. I loved when I heard somebody say, and I didn't like what this gentleman said. The port is held in the trust of the people of California. So when you make your decision, decision, you make your decision based on the people, not how you think that it should happen, but the devastation, truly, that's the issue. I don't want to hear my contract. No. I hear numbers. I hear Commissioner Resnick's statement saying, you know, we've lost. I just told you, based on what the port told us, 9 million containers, we broke the records for the last three years. So how are we losing share? I'm not telling you how to run your business. Denmark is where this company is from, a foreign company coming to take American jobs. These are American jobs. I'm not here to advocate for them. Now, yes, I'm a Democrat, and I hear the other side, "America first," exactly what this is. "America first." I don't care about the GDP, but 25% of Denmark. I care more about America. My family, I'm a third generation. My wife's family is a charter member, born and raised here. Grandfather, born on Catalina Island. I was in this country and my family before America took over. So I don't want to hear that, "Oh, man, you know, I got to take care of MERS." Hey, let me tell you what. If MERS chooses to go what they said, somebody else will bring that cargo in, because 40% of that cargo is destined for here. Thank you.
My name is Danny Miranda. I represent the Foreman in Los Angeles, Long Beach, Port Wineeni, and San Diego. So first of all, I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to listen to us today. But I also want to acknowledge some of our elected international officers that are here today. President Willie Adams. I got President Bob Ashton from Canada, International President Bobby Olivera. I got Secretary Treasurer Mr. Ed Ferris sitting over here. I like our Coast Committee PDLs out here, Frank Ponce de León. And I got Cam Williams. So I'd like to thank them for coming out here today to support us. Well, I'd like to get into a few of the issues here. The workers in the Port of Los Angeles are the fifth-largest economy in the world. We continue to break records and create jobs for other parts of this community and our state. I'd also like to thank all the rank-and-file members that showed up today of the ILWU, my brothers and sisters that makes us proud to let these people know that we care about our jurisdiction. This is our livelihood. This is what we do. I'm born and raised in Wilmington, California. Very proud of that. That's where I'm from. But you need to remember something. Technology exists that is zero or near-zero emissions that can be operated by a worker, and there is public funds in this state to help this employer achieve that goal, to put us to work to operate that same equipment. But they cease not to engage with us to try and help them go to Sacramento, talk to our local politicians, who I'd like to thank for coming out today, to seek those funds. Why not? Because it's all about removing our jobs. Contractually, absolutely, it's in our contract, but we never knew that five and six and eight years ago. years ago, we negotiated that, that it wouldn't take us along with them. And that's what we said, that's what we want. I appreciate your time, I appreciate that you listen to the politicians, you listen to my brothers and sisters, and you review those permits very carefully, as you so stated, before you move forward on issuing any permit, because as one comes, the rest of them will follow. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to share some of our thoughts. My name is, my name is Joe Gasparov, I'm the President of the ILW Local 63, Marine Clerks Local, here in San Pedro. Over 30 years ago, I was fortunate enough to be secure a full-time position in this industry, which has allowed me to raise a family, earn a great wage, and contribute back into my community. I'm also proud to say that within the last three years, Local 13 has been able to add close to 2,000 new workers into their local, people that are offered full-time positions. In my local, we've been able in the last three years to add several hundred, couple hundred to two to 300 new positions in my local that are full-time clerk positions. And I fear with this type of direction we are going, that those opportunities will no longer be there, and so I would urge that you vote not to approve this permit today, and give us some more time for the fact-finding. Now, one more thing I'd like to touch on, because the contract has been mentioned several times here today, and I feel I would be missing something if I didn't respond to the other part that we're not talking about of the contract, and that was what was promised, part of what was promised back to the ILW in exchange for technology and automation. And that was a commitment from our employers to turn over all the work that was left in relation to the movement of cargo in these automated terminals going forward. And I can tell you, one of my employers and one of your tenants, about five years ago, opened an automated facility down the road, and that commitment was not lived up to. For five years, my local, myself and the committee I was on fought, spent hundreds of hours and meetings to secure work that we had a feeling they were doing but were being dishonest with us and hiding that work with non-union members. When we started to get close, they shipped those jobs out to Austin, Texas. And after you, after five years, hundreds of hours of meetings, hundreds of thousands of dollars in our resources, including hiring an IT technical consultant, as we got close to discovering what was going on and being able to prove that, they turned that work over to us.
Thank you for your time, sir.
That's not what we agreed to in this contract.
Good morning, Commissioners, President. My name is Greg Mitri, I'm the President of the ILW Southern California Pensioners and the Pacific Coast Pensioners on the West Coast. Let me start today by saying that pensioners and widows of pensioners and the ILW Pension Fund is funded by man-hours, not robot-hours. One of the most disappointing things that I've heard here today is APM's desire to eliminate ILW labor on an operation that does not increase production, does not increase throughput, and have said that we think it's going to improve the gate turn times. For a company to come in here and tell you that they're going to invest an insignificant amount of money on an operation that they think is going to increase, increase gate times, is ridiculous and disingenuous. But I'm, I'm very encouraged today to stand here and listen to the Commissioners, the new Commissioner, and I think you've accepted your responsibility as appointed officials of the City of Los Angeles, and I think that you have acknowledged that today, and you've embraced it. And I'm glad that you realize that you represent not only port workers, not only community workers, but you represent the citizens of Los Angeles who own Pier 400 and the land that it sits on. So we're just pensioners, we're out to the farm and we're gone, we're supposed to go home and take our naps and not be involved, but we live by a motto as pensioners, we're retired from the job but never from the struggle. And in closing, I'd like to remind you of something that our late friend, David Arien, our very missed friend who sat up on that commission board, when he got into a beef or when something was coming down the pipe, his favorite quote was, "You want to fight, you got it."
Mark Jurisick, ILW Local 13. I'd like to talk a little bit about the master plan. That's your guiding document, that's what you have to make this decision based on. Now, there's a lot of talk about productivity and what, what your obligation is. I'd like to bring your attention to 3.22, 3.22 of the master plan. The efficiency of the port is your job. There's plenty of documentation out there that even the latest study issued by McKinney and Company states, "Production with automation drops realistically 7% to 15%." That's not an efficient port, this is the largest terminal you have. More importantly, under the current plan, they're, they will not be able to stack containers more than three-high. 3, 2, 1 tells you you have to optimize this land use. How are you going to do that? This port is in direct competition with every other port in, in the United States, and trying to capture its market share. The, the goal is, the goal, our goal should be to move 30 million TEUs through this port, if not more. You're never going to do it this way. Going three-high will not be the optimum use of land, and losing 7% to 15% means you won't be able to compete with other ports. There is no other action you can take except vote no. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Ray Famalletti, Madam President and Commissioners. I'm a lifetime resident of San Pedro and Harbor area, third-generation longshoreman, and I hope future generations of my family can also benefit from San Pedro Bay. As you know, one vote in Congress shows San Pedro Bay over Santa Monica, otherwise we'd be having this debate in Santa Monica right now, but we're not, we're here in the San Pedro Harbor area. I've read the port's master plan dated September 2018, Section 6 Development Guidelines, which lays out the three-point criteria required to approve a Level 1 CDP permit. The port has already gone down this path before fast-tracking permits for TRAPAC. We've seen what's happened with TRAPAC, it's been a big debacle. You, if you didn't learn anything by that, then this is just going to get worse, and all these people out here and the community at large, it's going to get bigger and it's going to get louder. We're talking here today about Pier 400 APM terminals. You, the Commissioners, cannot approve the CDP without impact reports for mitigating the adverse effects on labor, the community, and the surrounding habitats. Please do not approve the Level 1 CDP permit for Pier 400 APM terminals until you have the necessary impact reports. So everybody concerned can read these reports and come back to you, the Board, and make comments. The community at large benefits from the port, this entire region benefits, but the destruction and devastation that will occur, every other employer is going to do a plug-and-play system like this. I can follow, I'm a crane driver in a port here, I can see the employers that aren't maintaining their equipment and just getting ready to make another capital expenditure. So please, do not approve this, provide us with the necessary impact reports for the labor community.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Good morning, Honorable Coastal Commissioners and everyone here today, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I am a first-generation casual longshoreman who hopes to be one day a full-time longshoreman. The biggest part of our, our job is putting our lives on the line, injured people like myself, and I'm sorry, I get a little emotional when I'm speaking about this job because it means so much to me, and I think that it's at a point where if we are not emotional about what's going on, we will not get our voices heard, and nothing will happen in the right direction. But I want to thank all you Coastal Commission members and, and for making the right decision ahead of time. I believe you've already done it. I've already, I think you've already put in your hearts the decision and made the right one of denying this permit. One of the important facts that we've discussed earlier, and I would like to touch on, is the 5G network. I've done a little research myself on that, and the employers have said they do not intend to use it, but they have not said that they will not use it. There's a professor from the University of Washington, Dr. Martin Paul, who clearly expresses the dangers of using this technology, and I hope that you will write that name down and that you do the research on it to help you with making the decision, because that is part of an environmental impact. Not even coming again to the economic impact of our job losses and the local community members losing their, people going to their businesses, I really believe that we need to make this stand now before it's too late. Later on, we will not have the opportunity that we have today. So thank you again on behalf of all of our people, of all our brothers and sisters, for making the right decision and stopping this permit.
Thank you. Our next group of speakers, David Samperio, Michael Center, Loy, Donald Galas, Joe Diaz, Valerie Zax, Shelley Lepanovich. Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is David Samperio, and I am a proud member of ILW Local 13, so for my union, Brothers and Sisters, 133128. I'm a first-generation longshoreman, and I'm very proud of it. When they talk about longshoring, they talk about, well, my dad's down there, my, my uncle's down there, I'm the dad, I'm the uncle, and I'm proud. The lifestyle has afforded me to, to keep my wife at home and to provide a home, a house, a private education for my daughters, and it's just a great, it's a great job. More importantly, I'm a first-generation American. My parents were from Mexico, they came when they, over when they were eight, my mother and my dad when he was about 18, he came over a couple times, they kept sending him back, he kept coming back. So my grandmother worked in the canneries, my ex-father-in-law was in the fishing industry, my father worked at Todd Shipyard, and my mother was a teacher's aide at Barton Hill. I was born and raised here, me and my brothers, and they taught us hard work, be proud to be American, they become American citizens later on in life, but they taught me to bring value to America, keep our traditions, but work hard, be proud Americans. Now, Maersk is a foreign shipping line, and they come here and they provide us, they're part of PMA, and PMA pays our checks, they, they write, they, they provide. We're, we're in union with, with our, with my union, we work together, but now they're trying to displace us with robots. Todd Shipyard is no longer here, fishing industry is pretty much gone, canneries are gone. Instead of working together, they want to get rid of us, and so I would just ask that you would deny the permit, and that you would take time for maybe them to get together with ILW, and work together like we've been doing, setting records, providing for our family, for the economy, and for America.
Thank you for your time, sir.
I mean, when they say, make America great, let's all make America great with our foreigners, and make it great. Thank you, God bless.
Good afternoon, members of this hearing. Before I start, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to tell you how this automation project is going to affect me and my household. I'm going to try my best to not get emotional, but I'm going to tell you, to real people and people that live here, I don't know about these guys at APM, but it's emotional for me. My name is Michael Center, and I'm a proud member of a longshoreman in the ILW Local 13. When I became a member, it wasn't just an elevation for my life, but this was an elevation for my whole family. My wife has seizures, and my son is autistic. He had his first IAP, which is an independent educational plan, some of you may know that, and they asked him a question when he was five years old, he's seven now, they asked him, "What would you like to be when you grow up?" My son told the IAP, and with his limited vocabulary, different things, he said, "I wanted to move the cans like my daddy in the port." My daughter, which is my stepdaughter, which I love very much, she initially wanted to be an engineer like her biological father, but two years ago, matter of fact, it was a year ago, and we started hearing about automation and different rumors of these different things of automation, and she said, I told my daughter about it, and she said, "Well, Dad, if the job's not going to be there, I was just going to tell you, I want to be a longshoreman like you."
Thank you for your time, sir.
So I just wanted to say that this project will really impact this community and everybody you see out here, my coworkers, my family, my friends, and this community, which I love so much. I, I vote thumbs down on this automation.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Donald Galas, elected, three-term to Central San, San Pedro Neighborhood Council, all my views are strictly mine. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for having us here, and the Executive Director. I'm here to speak on behalf of, you know, another public individual that's going to be impacted here. About six years ago, I started to navigate my way through the political realm, and I learned a lot from Ms. Middleton, I've been welcomed to her house many times, ate many meals there, and met a lot of people there, and learned a lot of different things. Mr. Perosi, our kids have grown up together, and we've had a lot of meals at the old Portugal Restaurant, and we watched them grow, those are our next future leaders right there. I haven't had the opportunity to work with Ms. Lenares yet, but I look forward to that. I also worked with your sister in the Wilmington Neighborhood Council, and it was great. What I am here to talk about is work, is I would like to challenge these gentlemen to come and lash with me, a casual longshoreman, on a rainy night. One of these days, I want to ask Jay to temporary dispatch these guys to come and do our job, because you know what, I can do your job, I got a suit too, I can do that. You know, I'm not trying to degrade you, but you come and lash with us, and you come up and drive the UTRs with us, and you, you, you lose your family holidays and your graduations because you're working for a future as to being a full-time longshoreman. That's what I want you to do. We sacrifice everything here, my grandfather, my dad, my daughter, my daughter's mother, my sister, you know what, and now my kids are coming up on this, I'm not trying to disrespect you guys, but seriously, just think about it, I understand the technology and stuff like that, but we can work together cohesively, we can. Like I said, let's get these guys a TWIC card, let's get them a temporary casual card, line them with the Vs, and let's go to work.
Hi. My name is Valerie Zax, I am here on behalf of Union Women in Solidarity. Thousands and thousands of mothers, wives, and longshore women. I lived in San Pedro my entire life, I've worked in the Port of Los Angeles for the past 20 years. I've provided a wonderful life for myself and my three sons because of the ILWU. I was here when Pier 400 was built. The few things I heard was, one, it would not take away the coastal beauty, beauty that we see every day from the hills of San Pedro. see every day from the hills of San Pedro. They lied. They also said that it would create more jobs for ourselves and our community. APM, now is the time to keep your promise. I'm here to say, we need those jobs, we need our children's jobs, and we need our future. We also need the corporate greed to go back home. This town is for locals only.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. My name is Shelley Lepanovich and I work for ILW and I'm also a community member. And I'm here to support against the Nazis from abroad and corporate greed. Again, why would we support giving our record-breaking results away to a foreign company? For profits, that's why. It's profits over people. Robots didn't break records, we did. An increase in productivity resulted in an increase of wages over 80 years ago. Now, it's resulting in job losses because they want robots and more money in their pockets. Will this fix the income inequality gap in America? No, it will not. It will make it worse. It will eventually wipe out the lower and middle class. More than half the population, United States population, is without a degree. Is America to forget about these people without degrees? Why do we support self-checkouts? What a joke. Is America for the people or for foreign companies? 5G technology, 5G emits electromagnetic radiation. It's like a microwave. The health consequences of this is cancer. It's changing our electrical chemistry. As human beings, our brains send electrical signals throughout our body for pain, emotions, movements, thoughts, and more. Have you guys heard of the elementary school in Repon, California recently where four teachers and two students were diagnosed with brain cancer because of the cellphone tower next to that school? Students and teachers are protesting the school to remove the cellphone tower. With all the science clearly showing a cause for concern in multiple countries that have already banned these towers, why isn't North America following suit?
Thank you for your time, ma'am.
ILWU stands strong. We get the job done.
Do we have Joe Diaz or Loy? Hearing none.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. I am here on my own accord. I read about this the other day. I just want to say in full transparency, I am a proud Angelino with the public school education here, then private school at Pepperdine University. Go Waves if there's any here. I am also, interesting enough, and full disclosure both to the council here and ILWU, a former AP Mueller Maersk employee. So, I have a very unique perspective on both sides of this, not only from working in that institution as well as a local Angelino. Through working at Maersk, I had an opportunity not to just work here in the US on the East Coast and West Coast. I've been sent abroad to work in China as well as actually in head office in Europe. So, my experience is not only coming back as a technologist and also supply chain management. I find this quite interesting and challenging to speak on. Before, I had a recommendation I wanted to submit to the commission as far as what I thought would be the best direction for us to move forward, but through the very compelling testimonies here from my not only fellow citizens but local Angelinos, I've chosen to abstain from my recommendation. However, I do want to offer a little bit of additional insight, both from my perspective as, what I like to say, the millennial, you know, in the room, as well as someone who really does care deeply about these issues for creating jobs. Not only are there opportunities to create jobs where we can work in conjunction with robotics, but there's also jobs that already exist today that are already here, such as construction and other additional developments that we sorely need. You know, however, as a person of faith, something that brought to my mind is when Jesus walked on water. Not many people think of that as, you know, something that is about faith, but it really is. Peter and his disciples were in a storm and Jesus called Peter to walk on water. While Jesus came out and called Peter, Peter started to walk on the water and began to sink. This is because he became fearful and then due his fear, he lost faith. And through that, then Jesus uplifted him from the water again and his faith was restored, you know. So, this is something I think about in this situation where we're in the middle of a storm.
Thank you for your time, sir.
It's very dynamic and I wish everyone to have more faith in both sides to find a compromise that's both reasonable and best for both parties. Thank you.
Last call for Joe Diaz. Hearing none. Sorry, this card is difficult to read. Ricardo Mendoza? Local 56? Anyone? Don Bodnar? Raquel Quintana? Victor Yaninez? Mike Munoz? Beau Lloyd? Shannon Ross?
I'm not sure if there's a particular order. Okay. Good morning. My name is Michael Munoz. I'm the senior researcher for the Safe and Clean Ports Project at the Los Angeles Alliance for New Economy. And I'm here today and stand in solidarity with the longshore workers and with ILWU. Full automation will have devastating impacts on the community, on the community and its economy. Clean technology doesn't have to replace human beings. We've heard that over and over. What it will do is it'll create a race to the bottom and the race to the bottom is going to lead to poverty. Don't let what happened to port truck drivers happen to longshore workers. The port loves to talk about the 1 in 9 jobs and thank you to Commissioner Perosi for bringing this up, but if we think about it, what good jobs are going to be left if we allow the ports to automate all the terminals? When you're looking at this application, right, we're asking you to take into consideration the true environmental impacts, which you should look at, which include the economic impacts. And for those reasons, we ask that this commission deny the application.
Are all of the other speakers missing? Don Bodnar? Raquel Quintana? Beau Lloyd? Anybody? April Serna? Hera Serna? Sandra Marchioli? Jaleen Galas? John Bagakis? Jeremy Arnold? Vivian Price? Please come forward.
Hi. I'm Sandra Marchioli. I'm the owner of Godmother Saloon. I'm here to support the ILWU. Godmother's has been in business for over 55 years. My employees and I rely on the business and the support of the union members. The whole small business community will be greatly impacted by the loss of jobs from automation. Thank you very much.
It's officially, "Good afternoon, Commissioners." My name is John Bagakis. I'm here this morning speaking as a concerned business owner. I am the managing partner of Big Nick's Pizza here in San Pedro. And as you can see, as you can hear, all of my customers are here today. The issue of automation has us all worrying about the future. Several of my fellow restaurateurs and I have and will continue to express concerns on its effect on the local economy and small business. I currently employ 54 people supporting themselves and their families, but it goes deeper than that. If the local economy suffers, the community suffers. Less money spent in our stores and eateries equals less money for my business to use to sponsor a local Little League team, to buy a table at the adult prom benefiting young women in our community, less money to buy an ad for the Nutcracker at the Warner Grand, less resources to donate 10 pizzas a day to our teachers who are on strike, or give to our students who have perfect attendance. There have been, there have been economic studies in recent years that show a large percentage of locals leave San Pedro for work. These are the people who are here every day working and support our small business community. When you drive, when you drive down the 110 South and see the bridge and cranes come into focus, that is the symbol of this town and this region. A symbol for the working man, a community built by him that relies on him. People on the docks are truly the lifeblood of San Pedro and the harbor area. It is disheartening that this issue is on the table now when we are on the verge of the greatest economic development we have seen in decades here in San Pedro and Wilmington. Thank you. In my business, in my business, technology and its advances help make our job easier and more importantly, safer. It cannot, will not, and should not ever eliminate the human factor.
Thank you for your time, sir.
All men and women should have that right and this business community also understands an injury to one is an injury to all.
Good afternoon, fellow community members. I come here in support of my brothers and sisters for the ILWU. Today, I kindly ask you to please reconsider your decision on the process of automating the Maersk terminal. I'm 20 years old and I was born into a family of longshoremen labors. I am one citizen of the harbor area and a population of about 80,000-plus people. I know for a fact that there are other members in my community who can relate or connect to at least someone knowing who works at our port. So, if you can imagine, when you take away my family's jobs, you are also taking away thousands of other families' jobs as well. Without my mother having the health benefits the ILWU provides, I would have not had the opportunity to receive the proper treatment I needed to battle skin cancer. Now, I can imagine what the hard-working men and women behind me, health issues that they have to deal with on a daily. Some people believe that this incorporation of automation isn't going to have much impact when in reality, it's only going to create a domino effect throughout our whole community. Our local businesses, our schools, and most importantly, your guys' positions as harbor commissioners are going to be heavily influenced. I am an alumni of the Port of Los Angeles High School, so I'm aware of how economically important this industry is to us. Although APM terminals have the contractual right to automate their facility, that does not mean that we should without considering the long-term effects. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms., what was your name, please?
Jaleen Galas.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, community of San Pedro and the ILWU. My name is Vivian Price. I teach Labor Studies at California State University Dominguez Hills. And I'm a proud membership of the leadership of the California Faculty Association. I teach a class called "The Future of Work." We stand at a crossroads today. Today's battle is for people to have jobs with dignity instead of wealthy CEOs to make more profit off of world trade. We see records being broken and extraordinary profits being made. So, then what is the reason for automation? Is it clean air? Workers need clean air too. Residents here in the harbor need clean air. Why not put as much attention, as we see in this automation, into driver-operated renewable energy vehicles? I have seen them languish in the warehouses and not being tried, not being developed, and that's a damn shame. Develop the technology that keeps people working. Is automation to keep unions from speaking up for working people? Maybe that's the real reason. Maybe they're just afraid of workers standing up for respect. Is it to put people over profits? The corporate class will stop at nothing if they think they will make money, no matter what country they are from, no matter what nationality of the workers. This is happening in other countries, in Germany, in Britain, and in China. And I'm in touch with the dockers in many other countries who are fighting the same battle we're fighting here today and the world is watching us.
Thank you for your time.
It's not the technology that's good or bad. I have, I'm about to have robot-enhanced heart surgery. A doctor will be guiding that machine. The recovery time is shorter and there is less pain. Let's develop the economy to serve the people.
I guess we've run out of our speaker cards. Last call, Don Bodnar? Raquel Quintana? Victor Yaninez? Beau Lloyd? Lee Williams? Michelle Akoni? Maria Couch? Ellis Stewart? Larry? Sorry, I can't read this.
Looks like Beetlejuice.
San, don't say Beetlejuice. San Pedro Democratic something. Rennie Nunez? Any names sound familiar? Good afternoon.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Your name, please.
My name is Lee Williams. I'm a local leader. I'm on a number of boards here in the community and I'm a Realtor. I'm a Realtor who runs the Williams Group. I have a team of agents who count on me to help provide food for their families and roof over their heads. Real estate is facing automation as well, but I reject that because in the end, real estate is people helping people. I've only lived in San Pedro for about 11 years, so I know I'm not allowed to quite have an opinion yet, but I've been a Realtor since 1988 and I work with generations. And what you're about to do could hurt future generations. Here in the harbor area, about 30% of all home purchases are for first-time home buyers and then the next 30% is move-up buyers and then the last 30% is people that are looking for the last home that they're going to live in. These are how generations create lives and how families put kids through schools. This is how they pay for weddings and this is how they provide for a quality of life for the whole community. What you decide here today will affect generations for both Realtors that I employ on my team, but also for generations of folks that we serve. Housing needs jobs to remain healthy and without them, I may need to stop selling real estate and just focus on rentals and possibly foreclosures. Homeownership is part of the American dream. Please don't let our children lose that. I ask you to stand with the generations who built this community and I ask you to stand with, stand with labor and reject automation.
Sorry, that other card was Carrie Scoville. Oh, you're going there? Oh, sorry. You can, please come up.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michelle Akoni. I had a speech, but I want to just address a couple of points that were brought up today. First of all, I am a resident of San Pedro. I'm a voter and a taxpayer. I'm not a member of the ILWU, but I do want to be. However, APM Maersk is making that reality look pretty bleak, as well as for many others here today. here today. You mentioned that the ILWU presented over 10,000 petitions. I was handed petitions this morning, and there are more people out here who want to hand more in. So I'm not just the voice for myself. Also, this is a 4G. I pay $250 a month, and I can't get service out here. So if you think they're going to run one of those big trucks on a 4G network, no way! And another thing I want to say, how many electricians does it take to put in a lightbulb? One. How many mechanics does it take to fix a truck? One. That is not bringing in more jobs. That is not bringing in more jobs. Also, what I want to say is, you talked about 15 months. You're worried about 15 months. My daughter just graduated university. My son's going to graduate university this spring. Our loans are on a 10-year plan. 16, 15 months? Man, we're looking further. We're looking for kids, grandkids. Also, what I want to say is that, though I am not an ILWU member, I've put in hundreds of hours down here, and not one time have I worked at TRPAC. Not one time have I worked at LBCT, Long Beach Container Terminal, because they don't need people. And what I want to say is, if you are a representative of the people, please stand up, because I want to show you. How many of you in this room have worked? It is the 21st of May, March. It is the 21st. How many of you in this room have worked less than three days this month? Stand up! Stand up if you have worked less than three days this month! And if you don't think that these guys bringing automation in is not going to cut more jobs, I know there are more of you. There are way more of you. So thank you.
Good afternoon, Harbor Commissioners, staff. Thank you for allowing us to speak here today. And welcome, Diane Middleton. I am Carrie Scoville. I am president of the San Pedro Democratic Club. A few moments, a little bit ago, our sister Shannon Ross read a resolution by the Los Angeles County Democratic Party. She ran out of time, so I'm going to complete the resolution, since we pass it ourselves here with the San Pedro Democratic Club. And it is the "therefore" clause. Therefore, the San Pedro Democratic Club should take a position to support the ILWU, labor, and the workers of Los Angeles by requesting that the Port of Los Angeles decline such permit and/or ask the Port of Los Angeles delay granting of the permit until it is time to do more in-depth research on this automation technology and its costs and benefits, including a full report on how such worker-replacing electric power technologies will impact the local economy in terms of direct jobs, indirect jobs, the housing market, the environment, and our tax base. And I want to add, there was concern about port diversion and the diversion with container traffic. Yes, some is going to other locations. Yes, it may go to the Gulf, but it'll get to its destination slower. And the truth is, we have the deepest port, we have the fastest port, and if people want to do business, they need to do business in the port of Los Angeles and Long Beach, or they're not doing business. And thank you for this opportunity.
Good afternoon. My name's Rennie Nunez. I own Renswear. I design logos for local businesses. It's no secret, our community is on the verge of losing thousands of jobs. Slowly, the port is growing larger and larger, while jobs are soon becoming fewer and fewer. These companies have definitely prospered off being in our communities and will continue to do so. Production, consumption, and transfer of wealth, all major components to a successful economy. And that's exactly what longshorewomen and men do to contribute to our community. So if automation takes all of their jobs, how will we, as citizens and local business owners, continue to prosper from the port? That's what I'm asking. So, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Maria Couch, and I am here as a stakeholder, but I'm also vice president of the Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council, a member of the ILWU Women's Auxiliary, a member of Barton Hill Pride Achievement, where alumni group that helps Barton Hill, and I teach catechism. So at St. Peter's Church. Now, this is the value. You mentioned, Commissioner Reinwick mentioned cost. The cost of a dollar that you might lose, and I know it's more, can be replaced. But the cost of losing our jobs in our community, what's going to happen is that this town is going to die. We have developers that are coming in to develop multi-unit homes, apartments, ranchos being redeveloped. There's promise of jobs coming in, but the last I heard, SpaceX decided not to. So all of these are promises and maybes and could be, but the one consistent, steady thing we can count on is the ILWU. Now, we talk about jobs and the restaurants and how the money infuses the community, but there's another thing that the members here do. They're not just labor. There are members of our community that coach Little League teams, that when they see a child cannot afford cleats, they will come out of their pocket to buy them cleats, to buy the uniforms. This is not just the value on the dock that an automated robot will provide, because that robot will never come off that dock. It will never go into our churches, to go with the strike with the teachers. We opened our homes, provided a bathroom for the whole week, food, restaurants donated, longshoremen walked the line. I mean, this is something, value and the cost that will come to us if this permit is not reevaluated, that the discussions that Commissioner Middleton mentioned are not taking place first before this decision is made, because it will be a domino effect. Thank you.
If you submitted a speaker card, and I have not yet called your name, please come forward.
Hello, Commissioners, and thank you, everyone, for being here today. I'd just like to say that I have worked at...
I'm sorry, your name, please.
My name is Sharice McDonald.
I do not have a speaker card for you. Jana, what's the protocol? That's okay. Okay, please, please continue.
Thank you. I have worked at LBCT. It was very interesting, very educational, but the one thing about it was that it did take away jobs. I love my job. I love the community that I was raised in, in Los Angeles City. My kids, I talk to them about robotics, and I'm like, you got to get educated. There is a future here. We can work together, and we should work together, and that our jobs should be saved. We are people, just like you, and like everyone here, and everyone wants to continue to have a job. We know that the future is coming, but we can all work together and stand together. And don't forget the one thing in this life that keeps us breathing every day is God, and He is real. And I know that you all will make the right decision, because God said, "Do not fear men, or machines, or anything else, because He will have the last word." And you guys will work with us. You have no other choice, because my God is real, and I believe in Him. And thank you today.
Thank you. Last call for April Serna, Hera Serna, Ellis Stewart, Jeremy Arnold. Hearing none, that now closes public comment. Board Secretary.
Moving on to category six, the appellant repeal. Five minutes will be allotted for this time.
You're the appellant.
So before I get into my specifics, I'd like to make sure that we say that there's certain individuals that we know, Assembly members, Ed Chow, Chris Holden, Blanca Rubio, Reggie Jones-Sawyer, Senators Susan Rubio, Maria Elena DeRazo, Connie Leva, Bob Archuleta, Tom Moonberg, Speaker of the House Rendin, and Pro Tem Tony Atkins have all submitted letters of support in what we're fighting for here today, our communities. So I didn't write anything when it comes to this closing. What I did is, I'm going to talk to you about what's real. And what's real is this is not about our contract. Make it very clear, it is about the communities and the surrounding environment that is in that master plan. These individuals out here, you that live in this community, will be affected. Not just individuals that we rallied up here today, that came on their own accord, but as you had to be here, as working for the Port of Los Angeles. It will affect every single one of you. You represent not only us, but you represent yourself. It's time that you take a deep look at the impact this is going to have. APM will tell you this is about clean air. Well, let's talk about that. The machine that they got is a hybrid. They're going to have to retrofit it and replace it. So their first and foremost is not about bringing clean air in here. They got to make significant changes to that machine. And we know it, as we said it over and over. It was very clear as we sat across that table, when Mr. John Oakes looked us dead in the face, and he said, "This is about eliminating labor." He also said, in the very first Harbor Commission meeting, "It's not about efficiency." He said that. I challenge every single one of you, go back and watch the tape. So in your Port Master Plan, you talk about cargo efficiency. We talk about disingenuity. That's right now. We aren't being told the truth. We submitted 28 questions, 29 questions, that we don't have answers to. They want to make this about the contract. It is not. We are here today to talk about the community. When you heard today that business owners came up, that Realtors came up, that our children came up, kids that went to the Port of Los Angeles High School, and which you guys educate them about the economics of this, it's not just about making money, it's about having a life in the surrounding community. That Port of Los Angeles High School, that we see kids running up and down this street because it doesn't have a gym? Those are our kids in there. What happens if we don't have a job? Where will those kids be? We can go down here and anywhere and see the homeless problem. Let's intensify that by go ahead and automating this waterfront. Let that be on your conscience, or you guys can do the right thing. You guys can look at this for the environment and the surrounding environment, which is everybody you see standing here today. This fight about the contract, it is not your responsibility to get engaged in our contract. It is not your responsibility to negotiate our contract. It is not your responsibility to even interpret our contract. It is your responsibility to defend and stand up and fight for the citizens in these surrounding communities. I don't think there's any more to say, other than what you saw here today, the power is in the people. And I will say this one thing before I exit out here. The ILWU stood firm on an injury to one is an injury to all. Thank you.
Next up, item seven, the applicant rebuttal.
Good afternoon. Thank you for scheduling this hearing and for your questions this morning. We ask that you deny the appeal and confirm the determination by port staff. We will work with the ILWU, the mayor's office, and others as this project moves forward. This permit should not be held hostage. Instead, the deployment of automated equipment should follow the process that was fairly, fully, and openly negotiated within our labor agreement. Thank you.
Next up, item eight, the Harbor Staff rebuttal.
Thank you, Amber. In my five years on this job, what I have seen work extremely well is this very public process that we are all committed to. Some weeks ago, I was asked to put a venue together that would accommodate and amplify the message that our stakeholders wanted to bring. And by moving this meeting from its traditional location at the Harbor Administration Building, I think we have seen today how everyone in this community has a voice. This is the only industry I've known in my public life, both in the private sector and here, working in this job in this great community. And what I can say is that a strong community makes for a strong port, and a strong port makes for a strong community. Since this temperature started to rise just after the first of the year, where many of us had a lot going on in our own personal lives and our community lives, we've all spent a lot of time together with official leadership, community leaders, business leaders, and others who have very strong advice to give this Harbor Department. We listened with a discerning ear to each and every one. Every meeting that was requested, we took. Every idea that was tabled, we listened and shared other ideas. When we were asked to pull this item in January, we did without hesitation, in order to afford the opportunity to talk more, listen more, and find pathways for our future. The numbers are well-known, and a lot of people talked about them today, about how important this port is, and I will not regurgitate those facts and figures. We all know them, we all live them every day. But one I will tell you, based on all the research I've done as an industry person and what we have commissioned to do, that in the coming years, pick a year, the volume through this port complex will double. And we will need each and every one of you more than ever. That'll take expertise, it'll take skill, it'll take thoughtfulness and compassion, leadership, it'll take a roll of the dice on some things as well, things that we don't know about just yet. We have enough divisiveness in this country, and it is time to come together. To the President and the Harbor Commission, many issues have been discussed here, and we've been living through these issues as we work here every day. And your advice and counsel is always, and has been for my time here, always... counsel is always, and has been for my time here, always superb. The work that we have done on this one specific permit covers a very narrow scope of law in the state of California. And as we have heard today, it more than likely does not take into account as much as it should. There is more work that this Harbor Department, myself and our staff included, need to do as well. Some of this area needs some modernized thinking, some needs a little bit of a pen to the paper, clarity, and thoughtfulness that goes beyond simply the letter of the law. And as I have always professed to you, I stand by to work with you on your advice and suggestions on exactly what to do, some of which we may not know yet either, but we sure will work on it. When I came into this job, I quickly found out that everything is important, from the work that's in my annual review to the work that you do, that others do across this port complex and community, and I stand behind that as well. Everything is important, from the opinion of the person I work with and run into on the street, to people I don't even know who share their advice and opinions. But it also today represents a call to action. And that call to action is to widen the catchment area and receive more advice than we probably ever have to this date. I've had this conversation with leadership on both sides, or all three sides for that matter. We need to learn a lot more than we know today. Staff and I have asked for some of our experts to come together outside of whatever direction will be handed down by the Board of Harbor Commissioners, or recommended by our stakeholders and partners, to do a deeper evaluation of what the future looks like than we know today. And with that, we want to be a little bit smarter, a little bit sharper, as we go forward with decisions. On infrastructure, many of these recommendations we make are 25- and 30-year decisions. Tactically, strategically, all of those have impacts, but as we want to look forward, I pride myself in talking about facts and from fact-based opinion. I know my business pretty well, and I want to continue to talk about it with that level of confidence, so we can offer up conversation and dialogue to find those successful pathways. And while we have had some commercial activity that hasn't gone our way, our collective building of that future begins and ends with the comments that we've heard today, how we build this port and what it's gonna take for the next generation of leadership, worker, and employer to make that equally successful. None of these are easy answers, and I think that's all been drawn out today and in the past months of our private conversations, and some of those that have been made more public. I can't pinpoint and thread a needle from 700 yards away as to what work is gonna look like tomorrow, but I can sit down and try to put our best people around it in best focus. We have much more work to do, and that's clearly obvious. As the mayor's letter was read into the meeting this morning by President Lee, he is encouraging all of us to get together. If there are private conversations to be had, we respect that totally. We understand that. We too, as the Harbor Department, have contracts that we have to abide by as well, but we're willing to be part of that small group of people that sit down and talk through the issues and try to find that light that gives us pathways to the future. I don't think that we're going to have answers just simply coming out of this public hearing or one meeting with the mayor, but it's gotta be a commitment from all sides to be able to work through and understand how we take our steps, day in and day out. And I will tell you this, that the staff and I are 1,000% committed to doing just that and working with you day in and day out. And if there are any specific question from the President or the Commissioners, I'm happy to answer.
Wow, hearing none.
Okay, thank you all very much.
President Lee, item nine.
Thank you, Mr. Soroka. Thank you, everyone, to who came out today. I've been incredibly inspired by the level of support and camaraderie and community of all the diverse voices of everyone who's come out today. It's incredible to see how a community comes together to face issues that are so critical and important to us. Now that all of the testimony has been received, I will be closing this hearing now, and will ask for a discussion to begin or a motion to be provided by one of my fellow Commissioners. Finn?
I'm very, very impressed by the Executive Director's closing remarks. You sit here and you listen for three hours, and I don't know about you, but I was sort of thinking, how is this ever going to be resolved? Because it does appear that there are considerable differences. But I believe that Mr. Soroka's remarks were really, really helpful, and I think they were the mark of leadership and gave us some direction in how we could approach this, and I thank him for his very thoughtful remarks, because in essence, it's not easy to sit there, as it wasn't easy, I'm sure, for what someone alluded to, what Commissioner Renwick did, the six people in the front row, and to hear everybody screaming at you, "Your idea is really lousy." So, we appreciate the fact that without the employers, there wouldn't be work, and there has to be a way to come together. Now, having said all that, I'd like to very briefly talk about a couple things that I hope we can talk about, in the direction we need to go from here. First, there's still a substantial question in my mind as to whether or not this should have been a Level Two permit, which wouldn't really change a whole lot, because we've had a significant discussion, but I do think that there are significant impacts, and we have to talk about what those impacts are gonna be in a way that's reflected, not in what the people say, but in the application that's submitted. And I think a Level Two permit might give us an approach that would be slightly different on that question. We've said it in different ways, but I'd like to end by pointing out that the issue before us is really a question of the very nature of the future of work in America. Sometimes when you raise something, there are unanticipated consequences. One of those in unanticipated consequences is questions that are going to be raised in the legislative arena. I don't know if we wanna open that box as to whether or not public lands like port property should be used to eliminate human labor, but that question is on the agenda, and it was raised here today, and the question is where it's going to go. Americans everywhere are worried about taking people out of the equation. In the last couple days, I know we've all read, seven out of 10 Americans say they are terrified at the thought of driverless cars. We've read about the unfortunate incidents at Boeing that appear to be based on the fact that a computer overrode the decisions of the pilot. So I'm a little concerned, having represented injured workers for 40 years, about putting all these large machines carrying thousands and thousands of tons of cargo and letting them talk to each other and hoping that humans don't get smashed in the process. So these are all questions we really need to address, they're not quick and easy. We need transparency. We don't need some kind of shell game where information is held about how the work is going to be done and where it's actually going to be performed. The devil is in the details. I don't believe one of the parties should have to hire private investigators to try to find out where work is being performed. That's not my understanding of American labor history and where collective bargaining is supposed to go. That doesn't seem like a good idea to me. I believe we need far more facts than we have. I've heard questions about a feasibility study, I've heard questions about an impact report. I need, I think there needs to be an analysis of what is this project going to do? How is the work going to be performed? What jobs are going to remain? What jobs are going to be eliminated? And what jobs will be created? And until we really have that understanding, I don't know how we can have a discussion. Now, the final thing that I would say is I've always been a believer in participatory democracy. I have to give the utmost respect to the organizers in the ILWU, because you turned out the community, and just because, so give yourselves a hand. We know that many times, just because you ask people to participate, doesn't mean they will. And I will tell you, I very honestly talked to staff and said, "We don't know what's gonna happen. If 200 people show up, I guess it means the community isn't really that interested, and they don't see it the way some do, as what the effects of this will be." You disproved that notion. You did make your voices heard. Now, having made your voices heard, there is one important question, and that question is, is anybody gonna listen? We heard you. The question for me and my fellow Commissioners and staff is, what are we gonna do about it? Thank you.
I just wanna thank everyone for coming today.
Jump right in. Commissioner Renwick.
I'm not, I'll leave that to the thing. I wanna thank everyone for coming today. This is, this is a hugely challenging issue. We are all deeply worried. We, we all joined this commission because we want to increase employment, we wanna help the economy of Southern California. When you think about what the port does, the port makes it economically feasible to make, you know, to, to be able to go and buy your products at a store at a reasonable price. It makes it less likely that we are gonna go to war with foreign countries if we trade with them, and most importantly, it creates jobs. That's why I wanted to get involved in the port. And what I've learned here at the port is something I didn't appreciate before, because I'm, I live in the West Side, we don't have community at the West Side. We, so coming here to the port, I learned what community was. Commissioner Arian explained it to me very well, that everyone in San, in Pedro, and I had to learn to say Pedro. Everyone in Pedro, everyone in Wilmington, everyone in Harbor City, they've known each other for three generations. And I saw it actually once, when he was having an argument with someone who was speaking less politely than they should have been, and he said something to the effect of, "Not only are you a jerk, but your father was a jerk, and your grandfather was a jerk." And I knew he was speaking from experience. The community here, it's, it's, it's a beautiful thing to see. I don't know my neighbors' names, you all know each other. So thank you so much for coming out. I do hope that in the discussions that follow, that we can avoid demonizing the other side. It's hard not to. From the perspective of the 2,000 people that are here, these six are trying to take your jobs, your livelihood, your children's futures, your futures. I hear that, I understand it, and I believe it. At the same time, we have lost monumental amounts of market share. Everyone in the world, every port in America is stealing our boxes. Every government in America is trying to grab our boxes, and it's a dogfight to get them. And although our volumes are increasing, there's threats to that. So it's just, it's a balancing act, and I hope we can work together to come to a solution that both sides can agree to. Thank you for all of your time.
First, I just wanna say thank you for all of you who have taken the time, who are, what, are we four hours into sitting here, and your seats are less comfortable than ours? I, I have fellow attorneys on this board, I'm not, so I had to read and reread stuff, and probably still don't understand it as well as they do, but I want to be responsible and really understand what we're talking about. I appreciate the time that you are taking to speak with one voice, to be here. I appreciate the six in front, our business partners, because this is a family here. If we, if we don't have labor, we don't have anything, but if we don't have business, we don't have anything, and if we don't have a port that coordinates us, we still don't have anything. So we have to find a way to, to work with each other, to cooperate with each other, to compromise, so that we all come out ahead. For me, this hearing also makes it clear that we have a much bigger issue than just the narrowness of the permit that we're discussing, and the parameters that we're given, where we have a decision to make. We have been given a lot of information. Commissioner Peruzzi actually brought his box. I put all my stuff in a bag, but I took the time to look at all the comments that many of you were organized and, and typed them, I imagine, somewhere online. And sometimes it was repetitive, because each person was, has the same concern, my job, my job, my family, my family. So, yeah, maybe I read that several hundred times, but I understood that it was individual people saying that a bunch of times, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the fear, the fear into the future, because right now, you may have a job, and many of you that stood up have part-time jobs, and many of you were even saying, like, not even daily jobs. The fear that there will not be jobs in the future is very real. I don't know if that's something that we're gonna fix up here, but I do believe that it is something that can be fixed if everybody talks together. As Vice President Gary said several times, it's not about the contract, so I'm not touching that, because I have nothing to do with that, that's something else. But the influence that we may have into the future of the port, the kind of economy that it creates, the jobs that it creates, the opportunities that it creates, absolutely, we have a role in that. I don't know if that's something that's gonna be decided here today, but I certainly look, as Commissioner Middleton was saying, we gotta schedule that, that big conference where the issue is exactly that, how this port is gonna continue into the future, and definitely be a part of it, and not stuck in the middle of a permit, holding up something where it also hurts what we look like outside. I was really saddened, disheartened by the few comments that I heard about a foreign company. I was not born here. At any time, we start talking about foreign, you start with a foreign company, and then pretty soon it becomes foreigners, and I don't want this community here to be tainted. I know there's a lot of, like, our talent, whatever. I think it's one world, it's one port. This port depends on having a good relationship with other countries and other companies. We trade with the world, not just with ourselves, and I, I hope that in the future, when we, when we phrase it, we don't just get carried away with rhetoric, because we have seen in the news what happens when people get carried away, and I don't want us to become that. Our headline needs to be about something different than us trying to put someone else down just because, you know, if I'm here. And I understand we do that out of fear right now, but I just remind ourselves, if we can, if we can keep in mind that we're trying to work something out, that's where I come from, that's where I'm coming from. I really do appreciate the, the difficult situation that we're in, and I will do my best to make the best decision possible. That's all that I can assure you about. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucien. Very well said.
Very well said.[1344.03][1344.03][applause] Commissioner Peruzzi.
First off, I want to thank everybody for coming out today. I know a lot of you have come out, some of you have taken your kids out of school. I want to just thank everybody that, in the community, for being as specific as possible with their concerns. You know, when I, when I sit back here and think about this, you know, it's about jobs, it's about the unknown, it's about the future, but most of all, I believe it's about trust. It's about trust. It's about what's really being said to me. I mean, I spent a lot of time reading the documents, as you can tell, whether it was really trying to learn the contract, I know it's not our place, but I'm an engineer, a trade, as my trade, and I dive in deep when it comes to compliance. I take it serious, and I look at every word to the best of my ability for interpretation. And I think you saw that today. I think, you know, as we move forward, we need to really look at this and assess this as a whole, and I think that's what's on the table today. I think that's what came forward through everybody, is what does this really mean once technology comes our way? How it will replicate across the complex, if it replicates across the complex? Why can't we clean the air with someone driving a clean lift or truck as opposed to it just being automated? There's a lot of these questions that we all have. It is a big impact, being critical and clear on what is the surrounding environment? What does that mean to all of us? Most of you know I live here. I was put here to represent the community. I was put here to make sure that we oversee the port and ensure fiduciary responsibility and all those things that are important to all of us, and especially to make sure the trust that's been put on us by the state, we adhere to. So, we all take this very, very serious. I think port staff has done their best they could with this going forward, following the process, but I think we need more time. I think we need more time to bring everybody together and really dive into this as one. I know we've heard from a lot of politicians, we've heard from a lot of locals, a lot of people say we want to hold this over and have more time. We've heard from the mayor, he really wants us to leverage that time so he could bring everybody to the table, and I support that. And I really believe we need to honor his request to give him that time. Are you with me?
Yeah.
Are you with me? Okay.[1518.73][1518.73][applause] So, with that, I'd like to make that motion to request that the mayor be given the time that he had listed out in the opening comments for, I think it was up to 28 days, so he can pull folks together down to City Hall and really try and lay the way forward for all of us, so that we can, we could come out of this with one voice, one approach, and most of all, as one team. So, I make that motion.[1544.15][1544.15][applause]
Thank you. And to clarify more specifically, Commissioner Peruzzi will take your motion to utilize the up to 28-day period to postpone our actual vote. I have a second from Commissioner Middleton. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
President Lee, that would be a roll call vote, I believe?
I'm sorry, okay. Oh, no, I thought Janet said no. Roll call vote?
No, not on that.
No, not on that.
You told me a roll call vote earlier.
I'm sorry, no, 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 I thought you meant on the roll call. I'm sorry.
So, that motion carries unanimously. We will be scheduling our vote, just to reiterate, as we outlined in the rules this morning, the hearing is now closed, all testimony has been taken, there will not be an opportunity for further comment or submission of evidence or testimony at the next meeting of the board, which will be within 28 days. I believe we do have a board meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 16th, that is 26 days from now, and that is when the board most likely will convene to conduct the deliberation and vote alone on this matter. That date and time and all the specifics will be posted at least 20 days in advance and publicized in the newspaper and all media channels, as was this hearing. I will again thank everybody for attending today, for the peaceful and respectful process that we all experienced.[1642.63][1642.63][applause] We greatly appreciate your participation in this process, and thank you. I'm pleased to adjourn this hearing now at 12:57 PM.